Now, I call this joint committee public hearing to order. Good evening, and welcome to this evening's joint committee public hearing here in the Senate Chamber, and the time is 5:01 PM. I am Senator Busto S. Kerewa, Chairman of the Senate Standing Committee on Resources, Economic Development and Programs, R E D P. And next to me is Senator Carl King Neighbors, Chairman of the Senate Standing Committee on Judiciary, Government Law and Federal Relations, J G L F R. On behalf of the joint committee members, I sincerely thank you all for your presence this evening in your interest to provide comments on the Senate legislative initiatives that are on the agenda. This evening, the Senate Standing Committee on R E D P and the Senate Standing Committee on J G L F R are conducting a joint committee hearing on the Senate legislative initiatives introduced in the Senate during the 22nd CNMI Senate and are referred to these respective committees. Members of the public may feel this joint public hearing live on the following media outlets: On the legislative channels, panel of subscribers, 23; Tivo subscribers, 117; Docomo TV app slash GPT, subscribers, 16; and on the official CNMI Legislature Facebook, social network page, at CNMI Legislature, or www.facebook.com/cnmitlegislator. Now, I would like to introduce the members of the R E D P committee: Senators Vini Sablon, Francisco Cruz, Carl King Neighbors, Edith Belongerero, and Senator Victor Hokel, Vice Chairman. And again, my name is Busto S. Kerewa, Chairman. And I would also like to recognize the presence of our Senate President, Jude Hoffsneider. At this time, the Chairman of the J G L F R, Senator Carl King Neighbors, will make a brief remarks and introduce the members of this committee.
Good evening, everybody. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to thank all of you for finding time to be here tonight. I'd like to introduce the members of the Standing Committee on Judiciary, Government Law and Federal Relations. To your left, Senator Francisco Cruz. Co-Chair, Vice Chairman of J G L F R, Vini Sablon. Member Busto Kerewa. I'd also like to thank Senate President for your presence here tonight, Senator Jude Hoffsneider.
I would like also to introduce the Legislative Bureau staff who are present this evening to assist during this joint public hearing. The Director, Ferry, the Acting Director, Ferry Tenorio. Antonette Belagomis, our Legal Counsel. Jolene Breenus Tagovah, Senior Legislative Assistant. Tiara Blanco, Legislative Assistant. Chanel Borja, Senator Burke. Jonathan Diaz, IT Manager. Juan Sanz, Sergeant at Arms. Benjamin Tralhie, Assistant Sergeant at Arms. David Twoye, Sergeant at Arms. Dennis Regis, Assistant Sergeant at Arms. May I ask the Legislative Assistant, Ms. Blanco, to please call the role of the R E D P members?
Senator Francisco Q Cruz. Senator Edith B. D. Lovebrow.
Present.
Senator Victor Hukel. Senator Carl R. King Neighbors. Senator Busto S. Kerewa. Senator Vini F. Sablon.
Present.
Mr. Chairman, five members of the R E D P committee are present, one member absent.
Senator Victor Hokel is here by excuse.
May I now ask, Ms. Blanco, to please call the role for J G L F R committee members?
Senator Francisco Q Cruz.
Here.
Senator Victor Hukel. Senator Carl R. King Neighbors.
Here.
Senator Busto S. Kerewa. Senator Vini F. Sablon.
Present.
Mr. Chairman, four members of the J G L F R committee are present, one member absent.
Thank you. Please let the record reflect Senator Hokel's comment today, sir.
With members present, we have a forum to proceed with this evening's joint public hearing on the adoption of the agenda. May I call for a motion to adopt the agenda? Senator Sablon?
Thank you, Chairman. I'd like to offer a motion to adopt today's joint public hearing agenda.
There's a motion to adopt today's agenda and has been seconded. Those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Those not in favor say no. The motion carries, the agenda is hereby adopted. Now, we will proceed down to testimonies on proposed legislative initiatives. Before we start recognizing individuals to present testimonies on the legislative initiatives on the agenda, I hope they ask to please focus your testimonies on the initiatives and please refrain from any comments not germane to the initiatives. The committee members are present to hear your testimonies and not to debate on the initiatives. Any comments not related to the initiatives will not be entertaining. Everyone wishing to provide all testimonies will be allotted at least five minutes. Before you present your testimony, please state your first and last name and the legislative initiative or initiatives for the record. If you have a testimony in writing and you wish to provide a copy after giving your testimony, please hand it over to our Sergeant at Arms. I encourage everyone present to please adhere to our protocols. Now, the joint committee is ready to hear testimonies on Senate Legislative Initiative 21-01, which is to amend Article 12 of the Constitution of the Northern Mariana Islands to remove the restriction on the alienation of land in the CNMI to allow NMD landowners to fully exercise their real property rights and to reduce the NMD percentage of ownership in a Northern Mariana's descent corporation. This initiative is authored by President Jude Hoffsneider. Now, I hand over the floor to Senator Carlos King Neighbors.
Thank you, Chair. I would also like to... So, today for the J G L F R, we were extending public testimony on Senate Legislative Initiative Number 22-02 to propose a constitutional amendment on Article 5, Section 4 of the Northern Mariana's Constitution to require the resident representative of the Northern or the United States to provide a report to the legislature in joint session. Senate Legislative Initiative Number 22-03 to amend Section 10 of Article 3 of the Constitution of the Northern Mariana Islands to restrict the governor's emergency powers to mobilize available resources to respond to that emergency within an executive branch, but not including the legislative branch and the judicial branch with other autonomous agencies. And Senate Legislative Initiative 22-04 to propose a constitutional amendment on Article 10, Section 2 of the Northern Mariana's Constitution to require the governor to provide a report on social, fiscal, and economic impact of taxes.
We may now start the testimony on Senate Legislative Initiative 22-01. Please state your name and the initiative you are testifying on for the record.
Thank you. Thank you. My name is Patricia Semen-Raska. I am of a religious followers and to move it safe. I have four children, nine grandchildren, and three great-grandchildren. And I anticipate that more great-grandchildren who have yet to be born will be born during my lifetime. I'm not usually come out publicly on most issues. However, Article 12 is something that brings out my maternal instinct to show up and hopefully be heard. When the United Nations Council recommended inclusion of Article 12 in our Constitution, it was then taken into account the potential exploitation of the people of NMDs. It was perceived. The small populations of our island, the size of our tiny island, the percentage of what's left of our island being the two-thirds of Tinian, American Memorial Park, the North Park Harbor, and FDM brought the scale of our island even smaller. Oftentimes, economy is used as a tool to abolish Article 12. So, I asked myself, at the end of the day, all it takes for one conglomerate to come in and set the price on land, and I promise you, the persons of NMDs will no longer have the ability to afford the value set on our land. So, with that said, I ask, whose economy are we talking about? I was married to one of the covenant negotiators on a constitutional convention debate, and I had the privilege and a chance to ask, why 55 years? His response was that 18-year-olds are considered legal age. Tightening on 55 years should put one's adult active life to about 70 years old. By then, their children would be in a better position to determine whether they are in need of their land that had been leased. If so, they can make the decision now not to renew another land lease. If they are not in need of the land, they will be at liberty to draw up another lease for 55 years. This cycle should continue to ensure that the young ones and those unborn are protected and will have a choice based on their needs. This is what makes the good guys. In this day and age, we have been decultured. We are losing our sense of belonging, and our values are being compromised by material things and the luxury of conveniences. The only thing remaining is the fact that we still have our land to stay grounded and rely on our children that they will continue to live a life outside of poverty and homelessness. We are a people of such small number that the time it took Hawaii and Guam to lose their inherent ownership of their land, we will probably last a quarter of the time it took for them to lose theirs. How many will lose their land once property taxes come into play, and I'm sure it will? Article 12 is a very unique provision in our Constitution. It is probably one of the strongest provisions ever written to protect the NMDs. It is also the most envied provision by all our territories because they don't have it. Mister Chairman and members of this committee, I am pleading on behalf of my children and the unborn to please refrain from passing this bill. And to the author of this bill, what were you thinking? Thank you.
Again, please do meet your testimony to five minutes so the others will have the opportunity to provide theirs. Thank you.
Hello, greetings. Hi, today Chairman Kerewa and Chairman King Neighbors and members of the Honorable R E D P and J G L F R committees and delegates. My name is Dr. Teresa. I go by Isa Ariola. For the record, I'm here to address Senate Legislative Initiative 22-01. I'm here in both my personal capacity as a citizen, as a mom, also as the Chair of our Commonwealth, six-seven, all a community organization, advocacy group in the CNMI that seeks to promote public education awareness about militarization and other policies that impact our people and the environment. I would like to thank you, Kerewa, for allowing me to be here to speak today. But before I begin, I wanted to mention that our organization was, has collected a number of public comments that were sent to us that individuals wanted to be forwarded to and may request that these comments be allowed to be given to the chairman by the sergeant. Is that okay? Coffee? These are not all of them. This is just a sample of them. Many more have been sent. As we are meeting today against the backdrop of this public hearing is a global movement that's called Land Back. This is a term that's being used by many Native American groups in North America. Land Back is a movement that aims to put unceded indigenous lands back under indigenous control. Why do I bring up this movement? This is a movement, a global movement, that is a glimpse into what I believe is our future and what we are to expect if legislation like this opens up the floodgates. As indigenous communities all over the globe are fighting for their land back, here we are with this legislation at the doorstep of potentially giving it all away. When I think of losing Article 12, I think of how many more examples of disenfranchised indigenous groups alienated from their own. How many more of those groups doing, from their own land? How many more of those groups do we need to see for us to understand that this will be our future? I believe that land is inalienable. To say that 40 years is enough and that Article 12 serves its purpose, the way that the initiative reads to me is very contradictory. It's saying everything is going to plan, so we're going to remove it. This is a question that I have, why? If Article 12 has protected us this long, why would we remove it and leave it up to chance what happens to us? If the land is no longer scarce and no longer sacred, if that's the case, then okay, but I don't believe that that's the case. So, why remove? I cannot honestly name one indigenous community on planet Earth that has benefited from losing the control of their land. We have an opportunity to be a successful example to our community and for the world that what matters is that this provision works. It protects us. It protects us in our way of life. I believe it would be very naive to think that somehow we've escaped the powerful transformations brought about by foreign investments that do not prioritize our people. I am also very concerned about how this initiative would open up our lands to further militarization and environmental degradation if passed. I cannot predict how our island would be used. I also believe that it is naive to think that somehow out of every single indigenous community who is priced out of their own land that we would be able to escape this very fate. This is a wake-up call and a reminder to my fellow residents and NMDs that people are watching us. What we decide sends a message about what is acceptable for the way that we treat the land, the way that we value our cultures, and ultimately, the way we value life. By opening up the ability to sell off our land, we are saying that it's okay to disappear. This sends a message to our youth that money is more important than them. To conclude, when the economy crashes and all else fails, all that we have is land. It's the only constant and the only guarantee. We know land is not just a piece of property. It's who we are. Let us not be deceived into thinking this is anything else than giving up who we are. Do us not ask you for your time.
I will not be reading this type of issue. Today Chairman Busto S. Kerewa and Chairman Carl King Neighbors and members of this honorable committees. My name is James Ariola. I'm representing myself today, and I'm here to oppose the Senate Legislative Initiative 22-01. I make this fight by saying, did you want it for the opportunity to provide me this chance to speak to you? I am truly saddened and disheartened that my presence here today is to provide a testimony on an issue that I feel has no need of this form. I believe that there are so many other cultural and community formats that could have sought a better assessment in this matter and provided concrete and clear education and awareness to NMDs as well as the larger CNMI community. In my discussions as well with the public and about this initiative over the past several weeks, this also be a necessary anxiety, community trauma, and divisions that this has created in our community that has additionally disturbed me amidst the many life challenges that we are facing during these uncertain times in our world and in our island. Many here, I'm sure, will testify to several key areas that debunk the ridiculous claims that removing Article 12 would provide so much more benefit to the people of this land. I believe that our people have a wisdom and a long historical knowledge of what worked for us collectively. And in that context of communal altruism, the nature of this topic is completely different. I would like to take this time, however, to talk about one of the largest areas that would be impacted by removing Article 12 that is often not talked about and often not seen but felt in our communities and which is a big part of the many challenges that we face today. And this is the area of behavioral health, which includes substance misuse and mental health problems. We remain a community still impacted tremendously by trauma, by trauma that has permeated our collective consciousness by islands into villages and into families. Much of this has its root in his possession of land and war that remain a huge identifier of our current ways of knowing displayed in our customs today. This is also imprinted in our social health that remain an important part of our cultural interconnectedness, of respect and care for one another, presented in our oral histories as well as numerous outcomes of missionaries, explorers who visited our islands. Currently, we have some of the largest rates of underage substance use in comparison to the United States and in other developed countries as well as in the region. We have a growing suicide problem. We have growing prevalence of diagnosable mental health problems. And this was even before the pandemic took place. This includes homelessness on an island where this once seemed impossible. And unfortunately, the rates of these national CNMI-based surveys, all which shows some of the highest prevalence rates of people impacted are almost always the Chamonix-Taralhian populations despite the current population. I work with Pacific communities around this issue throughout our region. And cultural balance is a common risk factor, not just for youth, but for adults. It has its roots, often tied to varying degrees, especially when dealing with substance abuse. This initiative says that the legislature finds that removing the restrictions from the alienation of land in the CNMI will provide new and better opportunities for more financial security and liberty for the people and landowners to be able to live their lives in comfort and security. We are resilient people despite the many challenges we have faced. And we have retained in beautifully innovative ways core cultural attributes that define us as a people. If we remove this, I feel that we have much to lose. There is a comment saying that is often said that we need to be at the table of so many of the battles that we face. If you look at this through our eyes, it is our land, it is our table. And if we, it's where we eat, it's where we gain our food from, it's where we decide how to live, and it's also where we rest when we celebrate our new life. This is our table, and if it's removed for whatever reason, whose table will we have to run up in order to provide? Did you want it for your time this afternoon?
Good afternoon. My name is Brian Sales-Nicholas. I'd like to introduce myself as a full-time building nature, sometimes lawyer. I give this testimony with the utmost respect to my friend and my brother, the Honorable Senate President, Senator Hoffsneider, who's the author of this initiative. I am a non-NMI descent. I am, however, a born supporter of Article 12, albeit not in my interest. I have been a resident of this great Commonwealth for the last 32 years when I got out of law school, moved over. I am married to a beautiful lady by the name of Victoria Montgros Blanc-Nicholas. Herself, 100% NMI descent, tomorrow to follow us, vice versa, however you want to get it. We have our own sons and we have grandkids. They will forever be NMI descent, a fact that I am so very proud for my love, for this Commonwealth and her people. Article 12, I'm not here to argue or ignore this as Senator... By the way, my utmost respect to the chairmans and the members of this honorable committees, the committee. Not here to debate like Senator, Chairman Kerewa mentioned, debate or this or that. I'm here to offer a different perspective about Article 12. Article 12 is greater than all of us put together. Let's get that very clear. It is not an economic constitutional provision. It is not a savior of this Commonwealth, economically speaking. It is a protection of this Commonwealth. It is all about who we are. It is the only law in the books of this Commonwealth where you raise as an NMI descent, whether to follow us tomorrow or combine, matters. And it's not discrimination, it is constitutional in every respect. It is who we are. Let's not play with it. If you want to amend the Constitution, Article 12, do away with Section 3A. The Superior Court has no business involving itself in determining who is and who is not an NMI descent. Can you imagine if my brother, Senator Hoffsneider, and I were to get into a transaction? I had gone to court in head court, tell me I'm an NMI descent, and then along the way him and I got into a dispute, and then we have to go back to the same court? But I've already been there. The court already ruled in my favor. How would my brother feel? The Superior Court has no business giving advice to your people. Get rid of that. Leave Article 12 the way it is. Get rid of the CNMI requirement of U.S. citizenship. We have NMI blood who are not of U.S. citizenship. You know, there's some of us who are of Japanese citizenship. There's been complications regarding court cases. Get rid of that. Let's just talk about blood. Blood is blood. Blood is thicker than water. Let's talk about ancestry. Inasmuch as I would like to have... Inasmuch as I would like to have, may I have just a couple of minutes for chairmen, I'm out of time? I have much to say, but please remember Article twelve is all about who we are. Please don't lose that. Let me close with a couple of stories that probably put my testimony in place. You know, many, many years ago, we were granted the right to self-determine our future. So we went out and there were great NMI clinicians who came in and tried to tell us this is good for you, that's good for you, and this and this and that. The issue of sovereignty came up because sovereignty also has everything to do with who we are, what we can control in our own land. So they were brought to the shores. I believe it was microbeads. And they were directed to look to the horizon by some of our people. This is a makeup story, by the way. To look at the horizon and they were told that our sovereignty, who we are, is when the skies meet the ocean. The NMI clinicians grasp and gasp, impossible, they will never. Our forefathers to run into them exactly. Who we are is infinitely. It will always forever be. So, a Santoan old man was asked to bring a NMI clinician to Santoa. He eventually made it to Santoa. When asked, old man, old man, how did you know Santoa was here? In his broken English, microbeads in English, he told the NMI clinician, Santoa was always here. My honorable senators, this great Commonwealth, her people and her lands will always be here. Don't take that away from us. Thank you. Thanks for the extended hand.
Una estadis manorabli na senador, wahu si Crispin nglonya ogu. Dumutugidu wili para by adingani amzu, tigof da ukulu da nanako na historia. Bu isenente ni mangweilo, na mangweela. Ane utatayta esti na initiative, sigi uconsidera, hofsa gaiigi na storia, isenet president. Dogu kumpendia na mailiigi, ne toto tinian, paro fanhasu hofa moli para Marianas, special men kita, nanonya tinian. Minatris gayne utatayta isu na initiative, kusoda manma razza siapalopra, dabai tutun gi seksiona, sinku. Gi seksiona sinku ilenya corporation. My strike of the hundred percent Northern Marianas descent, da manahalong fifty-one percent Northern Marianas descent. Sigi taludu manaitai, uni taludi my strike of section three. Fifty-five years, my strike of, dos na numero sta my strike of the hundred percent Northern Marianas descent, da ni fifty-five years gi section three. Pura deno, managwahan ripo na seksiona, seksiona size, ane utatay papa i six bill ilenya. The amendment to remove any restriction on land alienation of real property in the Commonwealth does not automatically extend the terms of existing private real property leases. However, it be it be ma razza gisabakarinya, however, existing private real property leases may be amended to change or extend the lease term subject to negotiated new terms and consideration. Yaneu strike of the hundred percent, unstrike of fifty-five years, da nahalong ti however na? Dogu katkula todo esti na hinasu, yano metu na initiative. Liku, loka isin erners isartu liku kogwa esti na palopra, gi Chamorro dictionary, gulo surias. Gulo surias na wida esti una liliga para hauzangitantus, tigurosu si senita, i doctor senet president, lau i hinasu. Hundred percent, debi sa waha muntau hanauti na, da ne matata tsundu vinauta, da liku, you know what? To go to a gini Northern Marianas descent, da ilenya section five the constitution, nahita na Northern Marianas descent as a corporation. Sagualis tanya esti di Article twelve, i how to own land, how to eligible? Ilenya some sort of, some degree of Chamorro, Northern Marianas Chamorro, Northern Marianas Caribbeanian. Debyong gaiigi wili, gi nineteen fifty or before, da register, da ni o true, i corporation as a Northern Marianas descent, kusana fanhasu du na? Nanu katkula in toto, iparon reduce, i corporation, da parona fifty-one percent, estatay wina three hundred percent? Benatsadikas isartu historia, na sigi abakumfu, da ni fifty-five years na? No, yofa sasangan gini na initiative is, this is mainly para enzoa, imangai wina ha na isinya. Sinya ma ford esti na klasi, i byhalong dabai fani tanoma lapun, na iti toto tano, ni saru na drenan strike of na? Dabai gai balis, as a corporation, mapustakulu nasosu itku, waha po beneficial esti? Eto na section, i section five kalan, ababa inasozu na waha po beneefi, na esti na initiative. Siga amas ba historia lapun, na sinku minuto sa drenai, da si Jesus Moxie, da porukasi, dabai fafangi, lau iho? Na hangdu ne paimfa mangbota, tanafatwa gini gi senet, paro fanofatwa papa agi haus, hangdu paimgi niti mina? Quatro hangdu na manmambota no, para esti na initiative, maiwa gini, melada tanamaiwa, waha po pos esti na initiative, si Jesus Moxie.
Ah, si hermes rena, benas, ah, members? No, let me address the heritage aspect, sa todu ma sangan in opa, esti di, I just want to address the heritage aspect for Northern Marianas descendants, our whole heritage, before the states and entities, community, earth children, collective community. One we created for the United States and the United Nations was earth children, earth genetic ancestry that was ready to, that was forged to the covenant and with the rulings and the agreements before the United States and upon the people of Northern Marianas descendants. Article twelve, if the Caribbean people ancestors rights over the Northern Marianas islands, an ancestry is really worth here to pursue the covenant agreement for the United States. Like indigenous tomorrow inhabitants, we have ancestral land rights, sea, marine space, and seascape, ancestry rights in what we have under the indigenous inhabitants, our status before the United States and for the United Nations. Supporting of the Northern Marianas descendants was illegal too needed for the Caribbean people to fully claim their entities that was created before the United States of America by taking away the ancestral rights for the twelve, all inheritance by ancestry, who we want in Amur, it auto in isunya, ancestry, it is a legally binding and they have not taken the air and sea. So we are, where we are wired by the rapid migrations of the law, the legitimate heirs to Northern Marianas are available, the land, sea and air. What you are doing is supporting our unborn children. So I ask members of Senate, stop the initiative, abolish Article twelve twenty-two. It's a racial initiative that will eliminate the status of our Caribbean people, their heritage. Keep in mind, or keep in mind that Article twelve, the United States, also Congress and Senate are being within the number of seventy-five, seventy, ninety-seven hours of each of the states jurisdictions. Thank you.
Wahu siya khani kabrera kawawa. Matutu ma agi para be, haysin hangzu, pabot munga matpunu i Article twelve, putabot po la gi sagonya. Pula gi sagonya i Article twelve. I joke great, great grandfather, dangkulu panoknya gi kabrera, okay? Estahami, high generation, gi kabrera dangkulu tanonya, pura mandos mangagaiga soko gu, bina tonu calampio, walurai. Mula gi calampio. Iman ye dun ta tau, imas patgu, seti hectares irinshamya. Seven hectares gi calampio across the Hartwell School. I do any green, toza patgunya, masakwa, lo mana dokta patgu, nitihaga kabrera. Abendi, abendi, two hundred thousand. Saho pana resol? Timosi, ni ina adopted father. Sa toza, toza no? Napabe oluk. Ti, 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 pingiti regita, ta tonnyan ni adopted, abendi gi two hundred thousand. Ipumaha serafim atati kamatsu. Matu i bestam sanda at, apanggi two million dollars. Very sad, toza kronyes na patgu kabrera. Toza, ugakogonzu, napabot munga matpunu i Article twelve. Munga matpunu, saga ha gi sagonya sa tinanyalan, tinanyalan. Debile niti takputek, itano ta, ino den Marianas descent. Isyakmas, abisangan. Kabri kabrera kawawa? Si Jesus Moxie.
Goodness, uh, chairmen and distinguished members of this committee, my name is Felix Novis. I'm here standing in front of me as a private citizen to acknowledge my opposition to the initiative itself. First of all, thank you, uh, chairmen. Throughout the years, I've been a strong supporter maintaining Article twelve. Which in a way, considering the covenant right now, Article twelve is the only semblance of some power that gives us as people, as native, to our island. The consequence to our action today will be detrimental to the future generations to come. In fact, we don't have to look far, as far as the wife. Just look at to the, our neighbors to the south, Guam, where the natives are being tenants on their own land because they sold it. They don't have Article twelve. In fact, they don't even have a constitution. Furthermore, I am clearly aware that this is a contentious issue. To some extent, the status quo on Article twelve is perpetuated with a passion. It is with such conviction that I stand before your committee as a private citizen to solicit this committee's unwavering commitment and support in leaving Article twelve intact. In closing, Mr. Chairman, I remain confident that in the final analysis, this committee will find a wisdom in supporting and maintaining Article twelve as it is. Grisso, thank you, Jesus Moxie.
Hello, everyone. My name is Trini Eagle and I am here on my own position to oppose Senate Legislative Initiative twenty-two dash zero one. Senators, I would like to thank you for giving me this opportunity to come up here and speak today. From my understanding, Article twelve was put in place to protect our people. But according to Legislative Initiative twenty-two dash zero one, the initial reasons supporting the establishment of Article twelve are no longer consistent with the needs of the Commonwealth and its people. Senators, will there ever be a time for our people to stop needing protection? No, our people have suffered through over five hundred years of colonialism. This has decimated much of our language, our culture and our heritage. At this point, the only true connection that we have to our identity as Chamorro and Caribbeanian is the land. Our forefathers negotiated for Article twelve for the protection of our people and future generations. They did this for us and this is something that will continue to protect what we have left of our identity. My partner and I were having a conversation last night and he shared with me that he never felt such a strong feeling of empowerment. When he stood on the laddystones of Rota, then I shared with him that I feel that same feeling of empowerment when I read and study about our ancestors. We are so disconnected to them because of all the adversities that our people have faced, but we are able to connect to them through the land. That is what the land means to me. It is my identity and my connection to our ancestors and that is why I am here today. I want to share this feeling of empowerment with my future children and grandchildren. I don't want to talk to them about it. I don't want to talk to them about the things that we used to have. I want to share it with them. Senator Haf Snyder, you wanted to hear from millennials and here I am, a twenty-year-old aspiring social worker. I respect and understand where you are coming from with this initiative. So please respect and understand what we all have to say because the initial reasons for supporting the establishment of Article twelve is still and will always be consistent for the Commonwealth and its people. I'm sure that all of us here have an idea of what our future may look like without Article 12. Whether it be military buildup, high costs of living, or whatever else it is that we might be envisioning. Too much has been taken away from us. We shouldn't need to be having this conversation while other indigenous people throughout the world are fighting for their land back. We shouldn't be given foreign powers or businesses the ability to take away the only truly solid thing that we have left as a people. Our indigenous lands should always be in our indigenous hands. A threat to Article 12 is a threat to our people. So I ask you to make the right decisions and fight for our people and our continuity. Thank you.
Good afternoon, uh, senators, members of the community. My name is Tomasa Taman Palausius Coleman, and I am of Carolinian and Chamorro ancestry. I am also a private property owner in the CNMI, and I am in favor of an amendment to Article 12 so that I can fully exercise my real property rights. I support the passive of Senate Legislative Initiative 22-01 since it is one mechanism that will allow the CNMI community to finally be able to vote on the matter. Furthermore, and for the record, I support that public lands under CNMI Constitution Article 11 are kept for the collective ownership and benefit of those of us who are of Northern Marianas descent. I greatly appreciate the opportunity to give my oral testimony today. Thank you very much.
Buenas, good evening, uh, to all, uh, the esteemed members of the Senate. And I am Marie Nora Sina Itzanga Palausius Coleman, and I'm an indigenous member of this community. I'm of Carolinian, Chamorro, Salmon, and Native Hawaiian descent. I am a daughter of Oceania, and I'm living proof of the connectedness of our ocean and our peoples. Um, you know, but first of all, you know, my guess is, the Seni'zupu, you know, it's a moro, but I don't want to have to translate both, though. You know, gisa uluru, edi, patafana, arispe. You know, we have different perspectives, we have different ancestral lines, we have different experiences. The thing that my mother, and I agree a hundred percent with what she just testified to every single sentence, I support it a hundred percent. And also the Legislative Initiative 22-01. And I respect that there's going to be different perspectives here in the community. But what I, the question that I always ask myself is, who's responsible for my family? Who's responsible? Who's been providing and protecting my, my family, our family? The part that my mother didn't mention is that there are forty-two of us. She has forty-two direct descendants. As children, grandchildren, grand, great-grandchildren, you know? And if, you know, but who knows best for our families? You know, if, if people believe that the government and, and leaving Article 12 to protect you is, is the best thing for your family, by all means, we respect that and more power to you and please, by all means. But we want the freedom and liberty to be able to do as we please with our private property rights, and that is what was promised to us, you know? So we support putting it to a vote, because what's wrong with giving people a choice? You know, I remember everything that was taught to me by my, those before me, not only that, their example, but the one thing I, you know, I was going over everything, and I, I remember, I said, you know, the thing that I remember is that they never instilled this sense of fear in you, fear of the future. What they always told us is, you know, you know, to'ya famaulit, you know? You know, hago mastumumu, you know? And then they showed us by their example what we can do, and that's all we can do with our own children. You know, my parents hold me capable, now that I haven't made mistakes and learned from them, but they taught us, but we want the freedom and liberty to be able to do what we want, and we respect that there's different perspectives. And if people want to have the government telling them what they can and cannot do, and they want to put that protection in for their families, that's fine. But the private lands, we've had, we've had them since, bisiktem pun, palan before, it can pun espanyot. You know, mangaygenu shana tal, talzesti shaman, giri digu, benu or off. But I respect that and I support keeping it for them, but in our experience, in our perspective, you know, we've seen the flip side of it also, you know? And, and you just have to look around and see what is happening. And every time people say, oh, munga sad, they might do this, they might that, there's nothing even in our most recent history that shows that we don't have the ability to overcome adversity. You know, but if you have that fear for your own family and your older future descendants, by all means, you know, keep that restriction for you, but please don't tell private landowners what they can and cannot do to the property, especially ones that have had them for generations, you know? And, and even amongst family members, you know, even if you take triplets, they're going to do different things, there's so many different variables, they're going to have different outcomes, but, you know? Again, please, respect our right to do as we please and allow the people to vote on it. You know, we can all come up here, you can have how many, but you're not going to have thirteen thousand voters come up here and express their opinion. The way to find that out is to put it on the ballot, and then, and I am grateful to Senator President Ju Hoff Schneider, despite all the criticism, because it takes a lot of courage to bring this matter forward. Um, you know, and I respect you and all the legislators for having that bravery to do that, but that's your task. But please, I also ask that, you know, you respect the private landowners that don't feel they leave this provision, because, you know, in our history, we've been able to prevent, protect and provide for our families, and at the end of the day, every time I know, kunu ra'takin mami, guamalau mami, hodi mo'jusuran. You know, adasini'aji, o'truna tau'tu, sini'na ngoku lipu marasi guru, akapu tura famila mami. You know, I mean, u'rispetanama, you know, and this is not about coolouts and NMDs more. You know, pareo afen, jetseki, pare mina'ulit, to'tonu, pareo insipiu, enyuni, pabina juda, to'tonu. You know, and that's something we can do right now, but why not help support NMDs in being successful? Look, please, don't tell me na mana'masiyam, intinu, pa'man mudorabi, pa'ki sini'man mangukwan. Because there's nothing in our history that shows us that, that that's what we do. Lo engin malawi, talto poro zoki, sia lamu, lo engin hami, hodi us, sublibi. Who's responsible for providing and protecting our family? You know, and these for our private properties. Please, keep public lands for the people. And again, I do want to leave just with one fact. Keep in mind that a hundred percent of the Northern Islands are owned collectively as public lands by the NMD. Tinian, ninety percent public land, ten percent private land. Rota, sixty percent public land, forty percent private land, Saipan, fifty-fifty. And so, even as is, you know, there's no way we're going to lose all of it, because it's owned collectively. We still own the majority, and how those policies are decided and directly benefit NMDs is, is for another time, but again, I thank you, Donkulu, Jesus Masi, Olomoye, and I appreciate this opportunity to be able to, um, provide my testimony, and I've also included written testimony. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Senator. Uh, inandusin, Luis Capelisaman, I'm a Carolinian descent, I born in Saipan. Um, since the time Article 12 was born, I'm here until now. Uh, I just want to ask, uh, Article 12 to this day, as it is. Say, amugun, amugun ta. Ungana, zigeta, chona, yorikutu, iskawnyu, pura, cek opa'paru, mino'ita, luta, vastama, pacha, orikutu. Say, orikutu, pare, amugunta. Chon, amugunta, amge zigeta, pacha, orikutu, opa'bo, doka. Simpi man, da'la'ir, amokke, tokke, sapura, amgodu, mangagamerka, girmu, moktu, seppe, itaman, wa'dak, kikil. Kau morikina, pare, ita, talasuwa, elu. I, mina'gun, midu, punma, pacha, orikutu, say, orikutu, pare, amugunta, dan, amgut, man. Sinanodan, sitoto, or, original, simman, Carolinian. The, ubisita, buran Carolinian, zatipan, malawa, taprin, pacha, orikutu. Sa pare, amugunta, tamguta. To'zak nu, gaga'gongzulai, nasuwa, inasunmizun, na'pu nasuwa, isti orikutu. Yorikutu, pare, tanuta, sia de mai. Donklu, sitanuta, tanapore, no, Jesus Masi.
Good evening, siratas. Uh, my name is President Peter Leon Guerrero. I'm here to talk about the amendment to Article 12. You know, I look forward to all of the public hearings that have probably been held on this matter in every village and every island, so can really get a sense of what's going on. Now, I have to think about Article 12. You know, my mom, she's from Vichy, my father, he's a Carolinian, not too long. You know, so I'm, I'm very mixed, because my, my mom, she cannot live here. You know, it's a, probably a good thing she passed away before my father. Because, uh, with her, if, if she was here, she wouldn't be able to own the land, really. But even despite that, you know, I still, I still support Article 12. I think it's, it's, uh, it's not right that we want to get rid of it. Now, so I have to think, how is Article 12 beneficial? So, I've been thinking about it. And, okay, well, the, I came up with a summation that it keeps the, the land in CNMI descent hands. So no matter what happens, the land will always remain with our people from, from CNMI. They go, now, is this good or bad? Well, it cannot be bad, because we are the people of the CNMI, we are from here, we're not like the Native Americans in the States, we're not like the Hawaiians, we're even the Canadians for that matter. People are trying to get land back into, in, in the Czechistan, it's not even working, even the US, they were part of. The country was founded on somebody else's land. And now, the real owners have been hurt it up, and they're stuck in, in reservations across the country. I'm not saying what's going to happen to us, but nonetheless, when we control our land, we control our destiny. You know, and, uh, because today, we live in a, in a society where what's mine is mine, what's yours is yours, just stay away from my stuff. But we were never like that before. Before, we came from a society where we were all together. Where we helped, the village helped everybody. You know, so there are some that are, would say, you know, it's my land, I'm going to do what I want with it. Okay, that's fine, but the moment you have your children, the moment you have kids, you have to think about them. You know, when I was, when I was twenty-two, when I had my daughter, and then I was thirty-two, when I finally got the land overturned, my father, he thought, you know, you're crazy. I said, no, the land actually belongs to her, the moment she was born, it's hers. You know, it's not for me to benefit it, for my children. I like to think that we all love our kids, we all love our kids, our grandkids, our future kids, the future generations, that's why we keep Article 12 here. Like Brian was saying earlier, this thing is very big, it's bigger than, than just the economy, it's bigger than all of us. Because we're looking at moving our people forward. You know, it's, it's, it's better not that right now ethnically, we have become a minority in our own islands. There's nothing wrong with that, however, we still need to keep our identity, we still need to keep our connection to this land. And Article 12, it puts the things, that it really helps us along that road. So please ask, you know, just, cue this now, if we want to talk about amending Article 12, let's talk about including more, uh, cross-blended ethnicities. Okay, thank you.
Good afternoon, siratas, for Article 12, I'm presenting. Uh, inandusin, Juan Diego Tenor. Uh, presentin' supo'gu, na'diat, parabey, na'tunganzu, isinetekku, poristina, na'propositu, ni, paroma'tega, gibalotu. I, propositu, i, legislative initiative, well, gas zero, uh, twenty-two, dash, zero-one. I, paroma'disidi, to'to, ko'poroma manteni, pa'poroma, nasuwa, i protection, i Article 12, is of the constitution. Jau na bina'tunganzu, isinetekku, na'paragu, lachi, da'sinpili, go', estina talan, ina, ina susuzi, fuma'posu, papa. Put rasun, na'ngin ogan, istina, propositu, gibalotu, ni. Istina, propositu, ito'to tonu, paro'panina, etta, i derechunia, di poro'pan gaitanu. Ngin ogan, isti, gibalotu, ito'to tonu, solaminti, paro'pan, di bis, poru, di nisidi, afu, utimonya, ko'hungan, pataman teni, pa'ahit, talasuwa. Simpi, manya'ono, ro'ki, to'tu hizu, sati sini'at, ta'sanani, to'tu hizu, na'ti sini'man, botanzu, gini, na'sumtu. Se'steno, ma, ma, na'klarudia, i Davis, uh, case, di gua. Istina protection, si'gun, ya, tu'setu, mungi, constitution, ma'polu, patafana, pretehi, i interest, to'to tonu, ma'polu, gisa mona, pisalapi. Istina, propositu, pa'ta nasuwa, esti, ipatakutihi, orikutu, salapi, mana'pufuna. Sa si'gun, ginasu, ngin, gimana suwa, esti, polu, sini'akulu, mas, i presunitanu, hodi sini'nu, mo'lu, na, paromasusidi. I, i, frame, as i constitution, masu, ro'ki, na, gina, tempu, mangatgada, di masu, to'tu, ito'to'ta, gini, gipandansalapi, gelenya, na'polu, ta'ta, tanaholu, misti, yang malu'pan, nuskontu, so'nyus, dispwe, si'opan, di nisidi. Estan, was, ki'pori, tonyus, malu'pan, gagaya, na mana'kumpen, di, na'prisisu. Isti, tanu, sini'uku, sanro'ki, ma'ki, sta'sanatunya, zacimu. Di pareo, na'marira, ni, managaha, in Mariana, in man'agaha, conservation, tarikumisa, na, sini'uku, kizi, kunu, tita'a, dahi, itaka, nagaha, orikutu, sa sini'uku, kitanu, kunu, ta'vispe'de. Protection, gini, kita, vismu. You know, estar, gula, bulangan, mangulu, bulas, shana, sinetik, man, pareo, tan'ou'upan, pogu, na'ku'i. Lo, tu'wan, estataman, oku, ka, tempo'ku, katu, two minutes. Antis, yo'uku, na'zan, gini, malaguz, be'atukamzu, un'ra'tu, poristun, story, ni, ma'pa'antak. Sin'paddun, dan sin'ni, na'kinikki, isti, mensa'jin, isti, na'kanak, dan i'condomentonya. Iti, tulon, isti, na'kanak, ma'panaan, hafat, Maranas. Imbe sajin, isina kanta ni, asama oni, totoku, para opa manasu. Na sen preciso na pata kutihi, kultura, ikustumbi, itano, dan bi na lalata, kumo totoku tano. Hi utimona verse, gine na kanta, galegnya. Anima kilat, itanuami, man manaki, man riku, dan mani luhu, mana masi. Anima kilat, itanuami, manaki, man riku, dan mani luhu, mana masi. Groces na gawa orikutwa, sapu enuna rasun, na si niya, suka timan man resi, otiman man residi, manya dunia, nu tano. Si niya habiragi, top ti, zena, tano, gi bismu, famagunia, or famagun, famagunia. Podutimu, jau na bi faisin, na presenti, man presenti, paugu gini na kuii, hafat maranas. Hafat ta ki kechogi, iste tano, ti tenan gine hata. Sen hafamas, siusmasi, dan good afternoon, siratas.
Good evening. Namnu si, uh, good evening, Chairman, Chairman, Mr. Economic Department, and Mr. Committee. Namnu si Vincent Semen Adan, uh, na rosi, Pidmina Kabrira Semen, ta taos si Jesus Talahi Adan, osma ta goindes, Jesus Kobi. So, for hundreds of years, we've been oppressed. First, the Spaniards, then the Germans, and then the Japanese came. Our ancestors were raped, and our islands plundered. After the war, we were in limbo, and treated like third-class citizens on our own islands. Our islands were plundered for the benefit of foreign countries to make their lives better. But they claim for it is for economic progress. Economic progress for who? Because it definitely wasn't an economic progress for us. Right? When the Commission was formed to determine our future, the United Nations pressed the United States to ensure that we, the people, kept our lands. Our CNMI founding fathers worked diligently to ensure that we kept what little we have. We, in the American Union, have the special gift that others are longing for. So why in the world are we even thinking of throwing it away, as if it means nothing? We are given the greatest gift the others are killing each other for in the past, in the present, and for sure, in the future. Right? And they're killing themselves over land. We are just stewards of these beautiful islands, and we go home. We have no right to sell it off for the highest bidder. The land doesn't belong to us, but to our future. So to the author of the initiative twenty-two, twenty-two zero-one. I'm sorry, but I'm known for being very blunt and straightforward. What were you thinking coming up with this bullshit? So are you willing to sell your children's future? Okay? This twenty-two, dash zero-one, doesn't even need to sleep. Shouldn't even just bed, shouldn't even be conceived. You know, when you go to a foreign land, and you see people dying because somebody else is taking their property. It really opens up your eyes, when you come back home to a place like this, and knowing the fact that for all those hundreds of years that we were oppressed, yet somebody in this world thought about, you know, giving us what rightfully belongs to us. And it belongs to our future. And it is, we are only stewards, we are only borrowing this land. Now, if somebody wants to sell their land, buy it, sell it to another local. You know, sell it to a foreign investor for fifty-five years, because I can guarantee you, fifty-five years, that's a lifetime. And I'm pretty sure that your children will appreciate the fact that it's gonna come back. So, yeah. This thing just needs to, you know, you want my statement, that's my statement, right there. Thank you.
Good afternoon, siratas. Namnu si Anthony Alanspan, with the House, it is a good one, going town. Uh, first of all, malamdu tu mugu na, oftenati, malamzuski, publiku na, para, para one, public hearing. La oftenasi, morgi ne gayi, ki serini taza lo bat. Masamun, je katu, hi multi-purpose, tamazamkun na lo bat. That, that way, people will come and hear what they have to say. So that's over with. Page one, line six, rengya. More than forty years, ah, since the application of Article 12, and it's still working. Why change it now? Why fix something that's not broken? It's the only thing that's holding us together, our island, and it is our culture. Okay? The city line twelve, the, the legislature further finds private landowners of NMDs should be allowed to the freedom and liberty to exercise their right. Okay? What study have you found? Mungitu midu study, rengu na zegda. Okay? Two, to share our land, to N, to non-NMDs, is not the right thing to do. Sepi man minority here, you know? Kada mawon olun, ti toki taru, oh, si niya, sakki tolu, midu sta. Line one, page two. The, you know, removing the land alienation provision will increase the value of the millisater, and so on, so on, so on, etc., etc., is a loophole. You know? Find out something about that's a loophole, you know, you can go around it. So check your view, because, you call it to, you say, no, I think he's, uh, has self-interest in to line his pocket. Like, what's it for me? You know? Uh, spensatusa, apatsatus mapus, uh, you know? Estatus blatus, bay, fuma, fuma, tolaika, si niya, giresa, la, sanspe. Why change it? It's still working. Si sen gi rengya, giri, giri hundred percent, fuma tolaika, para fifty-one percent? Ben hubor na, di hundred percent? Are you guys stupid? You know, I'm sorry about the language, spensatus, kumu gedi gyanzun.
Best as a blood, uh, please, uh, be more respectful.
Okay, I'm sorry, I'd, I'd give pardon. Yes, dingi alienation of land. Kumi xeremana, kumbe nistan, ita rotat, para basamun, ho, di, ti man minority? Ki kontrupendya? I guess that's all I got to say. So I'm against this initiative, fully against it. Thank you.
Good afternoon, good evening. Namke oni, sen chimpirosono. Today, I'm here to address the Senate Legislative Initiative Number twenty-two, dash oh-one, to amend Article 12. I have almost no idea what Article 12 does. Besides the hearsay from everyone on our islands who grew up with English as their second language. So my knowledge of Article 12 and its protections and benefits to its people are limited. Although I can see with what I've learned around the island, that it's, it's nice that we do not have a homeless village for the pets. I believe that it is too soon to make amendments to Article 12. How many experts have we spoken to regarding this matter? Perhaps you have, I believe that you wouldn't. How can we better educate the people of the Marianas to understand this issue? Your millennials standing here before you want to know what Article 12 does and doesn't do for us. Might as well educate everybody about what the insular affairs does for our islands. In order to make such an important business decision, we, the stakeholders, deserve a better explanation than this is to start the conversation. Why are we trying to improve our chances of selling land when we still aren't done preparing for our workforce for the reduction of C W? Without land ownership and proper protection for the Chamorro and Kyarlinen people, we will be paving our own trail of tears to a new tent village. The children of the Marianas need to have a summit to talk about where we, as a people, want to be in the future. When will we begin moving up north? We have three islands occupied, and we have many more that have potential. What can we do to help all the islanders benefit from our ancestral lands being sold? I have classmates and friends that are not full NMDs, but they were born and raised here. They are my extended family, every person in the community is a member of our island family. And I believe that this is their home. We should, we should find ways to be more flexible. I, I heard Ms. Coleman's statement, that she does want to have more freedom with her land as a landowner. Although I too, one day, want to be a landowner. Hopefully, that day will come. Please educate us again on what Article 12 can and can do for us. Explain more on how we can benefit from the, from the suggested changes, and also, oh, sorry. I believe that we should find a way to make, make income off the land, and then give dividends to every citizen and resident of the CNMI. Thank you.
Before the... Before the next speaker, uh, starts, I would like to clarify that, yes, this public hearing was announced ahead of time for the benefit of the parliament, thank you.
Hello, Senators, Chairman Kituwak. My name is Relanio Gunrel, and I ask you to vote no on Senate Initiative twenty-two, dash oh-one. Article 12 is self-determination and self-confidence. The land alienation provisions are one of the strongest and greatest exercises of our self-determination and self-confidence. Our forefathers negotiated this right with a superpower that just won a world war. In protecting indigenous rights, the land alienation provisions that are in Article 12 is a major victory. Especially when the US has the history of taking indigenous lands instead. If it was not for the provisions of Article 12, there would be no political union with the United States. The founding fathers had no intention for these finite and these sacred lands to be owned by people who are, who are not descendants of the people of the NMI before it became a commonwealth. These people are not only Chamorro and Kyarlinen, but everyone who is here, committed to living here, before we became a commonwealth. Now, people who came here years later via continental Micronesia. And the United States agreed to that when they signed the covenant. Article 12 protects our poor relatives and neighbors. At this time, there are many land transactions occurring in Timian. People are positioning themselves to reap whatever benefits may come in anticipation for the expansion of the military. At the same time, I attend Timian's small claims court, and I have seen things that cause me great alarm. For instance, many people are unable to keep up with the court order payments. Some as low as twenty dollars a month to creditors from the island. Many are out of work. Many say, "Your Honor, the mayor's office isn't hiring." They rely on social welfare programs and families to get by. With these changes to Article 12, there will be no protection against these foreign creditors. These creditors are the overpriced market in the village. And without Article 12, these creditors will go directly for the land to satisfy the debts. So many people will lose their land over a small dollar amount, and they won't be able to get it back. And this problem is not unique to Timian, it occurs on Saitan and Rota. Abolishing Article 12 will also turn some forty-year land leases into fee simple overnight. Article 12 was, um, a means to protect land from fraud and unfairness. To this day, the provisions continue to protect landowners. Businesses use tactics that are overwhelming, they're confusing, they're detrimental to the landowners. And the terms of these contracts are all in favor of these sophisticated businesses. The trickery occurs today, and I'm sure you're familiar with the trickery that occurred in the nineties. Same as today, these businesses provide, um, provisions that, um, let's say, once the land laws change, once Article 12 is abolished, the lease would turn into fee simple. So this would open up forty-year old land leases and change them overnight. Putting this initiative on the ballot will also cause non-landowners to determine the fate of landowners. The opposite result of the intention behind this legislative initiative. Abolishing Article 12 will also change our homestead and our agricultural programs. Once Article 12 is abolished, other land-based programs will be challenged in court. And we can no longer limit it, it has to be opened up to everyone. This means everyone will be eligible for a homestead. Since there is a moratorium on Saitan, does this mean that the now eligible candidates, the Bangladeshis, Lupinos, Chickis, Koreans, Chinese, Turkish, Mongolian people will draw their homestead lots on Rota or on Timian? Same with the agricultural programs. Abolishing Article 12 will also halt the flow of the seventy-seven million dollars into our economy. As you know, NMHC is rolling out these, uh, low-income loans for eligible families. These loans allow people to purchase homes and renovate. Abolishing Article 12 will increase the land prices, and also, um, instead of closing the gap, it would make things very competitive. So then, the low-income families with these NMHC loans will not be able to compete. So that money will not flow into our islands. Other political entities, like tribes, who have land alienation laws, they're not going for, you know, terminating or abolishing their land alienation laws. They're moving for longer lease terms. They had 25 years, 55, 75, now 99 years. I respect people's opinion. However, Article 12 is the law of the land, and Article 12 must be respected. I respectfully ask you to vote no on Senate Initiative 22-01. Thank you.
Buenos dias, Senador Womby. Namnus si alix santos ibetam. My testimony against Senate Legislative Initiative 22-01 has harmful to persons of Northern Marianas descent, N M Bs. Good evening, Senators and those in the audience. Forty-five years ago, thirty-nine founding fathers and mothers, all whom were elected delegates from Rota, Timian, Saitan, sat together on Saitan in 1976 for our first convention to write our first constitution for the Commonwealth. These brave men and women, of whom were grateful to Almighty God for our freedom, ordained and freely exercised their right of self-determination. When they inked on paper Article 12, restricting acquisition of long-term interests in land to persons of Northern Marianas descent or N M Bs. Nine years later, from the first constitution, or 36 years ago today, the second constitutional convention delegates again met in 1985 on Saitan to fashion a more perfecting amendment to Article 12 in our N M I constitution that has lasted this long today. Fourteen years after the 1976 constitution and five years after the 1985 constitutions were rectified on Article 12 respectfully, the first test on the constitutionality of the C N M I constitution was tested in the C N M I local and federal district courts. And when, as far as ninth appeal in San Francisco, California, where Wabo versus Velacruzis was argued and decided, in reality, Wabo versus Velacruzis federal case was as much a test of Article 12 in our constitution as it was a test on the covenant to establish a political union between the United States and the Commonwealth in Section 805 of the covenant, which states, "Except as otherwise provided in this Article 8, and notwithstanding the other provision of this covenant or those provisions of Constitution, treaties, or laws of the United States applicable to the Northern Mariana Islands." The government of the Northern Mariana Islands, in view of the importance of the ownership of land for the culture and traditions of the people of the Northern Mariana Islands, and in order to protect them against exploitation and to promote their economy advancement and self-sufficiency, Section 806A of the covenant further affirm that it prove an equal commitment by the United States to the Commonwealth that the United States will continue to recognize the respect, the scarcity, scarcity and special importance of land in the Northern Marana Islands over 30 years ago in 1990. The Ninth Circuit Court in San Francisco not only reaffirmed the C N M I constitution on Article 12, land alienation provision, but also reaffirmed the safeguards provided in the covenant in Section 805 and 806 ruling, for instance, that there cannot be a doubt that land and the Commonwealth in the scarce and precious resources nor can the mutual native ownership of land placed in the preservation of Northern Marana's social and cultural stability be underestimated. Land is the only significant asset of the Commonwealth people and is the basis of family organization in the islands in traditionally passes from the generations to generation, creating family identity and contributing to the economy well-being of family members. It feels that land in particular is principally important in the Commonwealth, not for its economy value, but for its stabilization, stabilizing effect on the native and social system. The land alienation restrictions are promptly built as an attempt, albeit a paternalistic one, to prevent the inhabitants from selling their culture anchor for short-term economic gain, thereby protecting local culture and values and preventing exploitation of the inexperienced islanders at the hands of resourceful and comparatively wealthy outside investors. The legislative history of the covenant and the constitution indicate that the political union of the Commonwealth and the United States could not have been accomplished without the restrictions, Section 805, in a fundamental provision of the covenant, which may be modified only with the mutual consent of the governments of the Commonwealth and the United States. Re-covenant, Section 105. And we must be mindful also, the preservation of local culture and land is more than mere present verandum. It is a strong and binding undertaking memorized in the trust issued agreement. Where land is so scarce, so precious, and so vulnerable to economic devastation, it is undertakeable that the islander's passion does not press with excited with mainland attitudes toward property and our commitment to ideal equanimity in its acquisition. We cannot say that this particular aspect of quality is fundamental in the international sense, therefore does not apply ex pro curam, virgore to the Commonwealth. Please do not touch Article 12. It's better you take my Initiative 29-1, then in part two, if, desti, more, in part two, if, if the, initial 29-1, then a pass it out, then this, and so, sir, and thus, as top, and thus, the Article 12, sabula, pabagunu, bula, pabagun, pabagunu, tabara, gizug, it, te, he, listi, Article 12, para, para, to, 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 the, energy, to, my, happiness, thus, ma, si, all, my.
Mr. Chairman, 30 minutes, no? Buenos dias, Chairman, very much. Uh, hello, Mr. Chairman. And Senator, Senator, representing, uh, the Prime Minister, Senator Ju. I promote, um, pa, unia, bea. Pina, na, no, bei, filo, nativo, uh, somor, presentai, tai, kina, antipokapi, pre, no. No, is thi, Article 12, ti, fina, nyagun, i, duran, ke, ni, i, political status negotiation, ti, fina, nyagun, unu, ki, nimbo, ki, tal, ta, uta. Fina, nyogus, thi, Article 12, i, land alienation, yes, Philip Burton, Congressman Philip Burton, in San Francisco. He is considered the father of the Commonwealth covenant and what we enjoy today. His main reason and only reason why he insisted that land alienation was, that he put in place, is to protect the people from outside influences, especially those with deep pockets, financial institutions for instance, that can come in, buy up the land. And so Philip Burton saw this for 20, for 25 years, and then the people can decide. And, you know, I respect that you intended to raise this issue. But having spent 16 years here in the House, and you can look it up in the archives, I have five fingers in one hand, I can name the very actors that prompted this legislation. And I'm not demeaning any of you, including you, Senator Ju. The fact of the matter is, every time the economy falters, this issue rises. Why can it be that we respect 55 years? And when the time comes, at the end of the 55 years before it, it's permitted on the Constitution to renegotiate. Why can't our people that own the land be called in and renegotiate to get a better deal? Why do we have to succumb to this to abolish Article 12 completely, when it's protecting the very innocent, the desperate, and the people that do not know the value of land? Governor Weyeh, he came here one time, I remember, and he said, "You tell the people and you educate the people, once you lose it, you can never go back." And like the old saying, "You don't know what you have until you lose it." Por favor, ta sumoli, que, si, na, na, artikulo, sa, kita, ni, ni, presenti, na, generation, custodia, ni, da, custodia, ni, para, gauri, 12, para, pabagun, ta. The time will come, honestly, the time will come when that generation that we're talking about protecting will decide, not us. Tita, bu, la, storia. When I was in the House, I did an extensive research of the court and public land. And believe me, all the things that really will shock you are caused by outsiders influencing our own very people. They take advantage of Tan Maria's, to, no, system, to, move, dona, value, ita, no, ne. They buy for $30,000, turn it around, and sell it at $5 million. I don't have to name names. It's in corporate. I didn't have time to print this, so I'm just gonna read it up. This is to the Senator Ju. I'm here objecting the introduction of legislation to eliminate Article 12, which I consider to be the last protection of the people of the Northern Marianas descent. Whenever economic conditions worsen, businesses' interests rise up to advocate eliminating Article 12. The main argument being that it will boost the economy in the C N M I nothing today or in the past years indicate, indicates that this will result. The people of the C N M I are at this advance economically, politically, and socially. I'm still unable to make the transition to be a more sophisticated market economy free of Article 12. For this reason, I oppose any change to Article 12 and believe it should remain as is, without modification of any kind. Laws are now established supporting Article 12 as it is, so no amendments, no registries, or changes should be made. It will only complicate and already complicate the subject. Just leave it as is. A recent Marianas Variety poll indicated that nearly 75% of respondents of that poll support keeping Article 12 in place, and it should remain. And I'm asking, se, dis, se, ki, man, wa, fan, nyam, nyagun, ne? Then, ed, dis, se, ap, au, pu, pabuk, kina, au, gu, lo? It, ki, chit, okta, para, tak, o, te, i. Can you imagine us living a life like the Hawaiians? That their government builds 30-story high-rises, and they're all put in. Governor Weyeh used to tell me, "Hines, look at the pigeons." Because once they sell it, yeah, they made a killing. But look where they are now. Good for those who individually are claiming that it will help them decide on their own what to do with their land. But let me tell you something about governance. Guben, amintun. It is our job to protect the collective, the popular majority. With this era that we are in, very contentious era, very, you know, trouble period in our lives, can you imagine two years ago if Article 12 was in place? Who owns? Who would be the owner of majority of the land? And they were our people. 4,520 years ago, of applicants waiting for their homestead. And we cannot even satisfy, now we're thinking about Article 12 being abolished. In Hawaii today, with the median income is beyond our capability right now. But yet, the cheapest and the lowest family housing or house that you can buy is a million dollars. It pushes a lot of the local people, not only Hawaiians, but the residents of Hawaii. It pushes them beyond their capability, even with $20 or $25 an hour. It's out of reach to own a house. And that's what happens. In closing, Mr. Chairman, and the Senator Ju, and the members of the Senate, there's something more troubling that I don't detect anyone talking about it. The U.S. Supreme Court has ruled that the territories has no, no place in the U.S. Constitution. It's an aberration. What does that mean? If that is true, then the US Congress, that law that, that acknowledges the Commonwealth of the Northern Mariana's, Puerto Rico, US Virgin Islands, Samoa is different. And Guam, what does that mean? The US Supreme Court, that, that is a troubling decision, Mr. Chairman. Because it's potentially a question of, does the federal law apply here? If it doesn't have a place, territories doesn't have a place in the US Constitution? What does that mean? Anybody going to court can now make that defense, it says, "You have no jurisdiction." The US Supreme Court has ruled. And this is why clearly introduce that with others co-signing to oppose that decision. Well, Supreme Court is the highest defining body. I would rather focus on that than this Article 12. Leave it alone. It's too big. Money is not everything for our lives. Land is everything. It's your identity. It's your culture, it's your language. Thank you.
Con respeto, buenos dias. Chairman Kerua, President, Senator Honorable of Snyder, Congress, I mean Senator Woman, Senator Cruz, Senator Sublon, Senator Key. Then totally, my guy, you know, please, Jesus, my assi, you put in the door. Oh, good morning, I'm busy, I'm busy, you know, I'm good. Some, for my money, I did it, I'm sure. I got a bunch of, and sure. Story could talk, I, fundamental, just, 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 see, former Speaker of Snyder. Or this, this, a reference, I had, I knew, um, I did, I did, I, I, I told, I, I, negotiation.
Good evening to both chairmen and members of both committees. Thank you for this opportunity to Erica Simone's regarding Senate legislative initiative 2201. For the record, my name is Francisco Emmerbonneman and I am very proud Indigenous and landowner here in the San Martin. I appear before you to vehemently oppose this Senate initiative, not only for my kids and my grandkids, but for the Indigenous people and our culture and what remains of it. There are many ways to argue against this initiative, but for the interest of time, I will limit my arguments to three points, knowing others who will follow. And if some of these points have been repeated earlier, that's because they need to be repeated again. First, the initiative reports that Article 12 somehow restricts landowners from realizing their real property rights. To me, this means the center is not exposed to a more competitive market because, the initiative seems to imply, that the pool of buyers are limited to Indigenous buyers, making it less competitive. This is not true. This is a farce. This is a lie. I did not hear nor see any, anyone complain about Article 12 back in the mid-eighties, when land leases were going through the roof and going into millions. Furthermore, this false narrative that Article 12 somehow is an impediment on our economy because investors will not commit if they don't own the land, another farce, another lie. How did we get the Japanese investors to line on coast with resorts? Others to invest in the garment industry that added over eighty million annually to the local coffers? And most recently, the casino industry, when at its peak, enabled the legislature to appropriate millions from the casino fees multiple times in a year. All of these revenue generating activities and game-changing industries happened with Article 12 fully intact. Second, it seems that every time we are in an economic slump, we are quick to find who or what to blame. And Article 12 has been blamed several times in the past. Our founding fathers embraced Article 12 because they saw the struggles that the Huanians and the Native Hawaiians were going through. They saw the influence of big corporations buying up private properties and how the natives were being swept aside and minimized in their own land. They knew the land in the nation could provide some level of protection against corporate businesses or other outside interests, but it was a tough ask, especially under the American capitalistic system. However, as you all know, Article 12 made its way through the federal courts and was upheld. Let me repeat that. It was upheld. An unprecedented decision that the land in the nation is constitutionally protected. I do not believe any other state or territory has this distinction. In essence, of the more than three hundred and thirty-one million US citizens, the US Constitution allowed but a fraction of its entire citizens to own land here in the San Martin. My point is, we should be celebrating and be damn grateful that we have constitutionally protected right instead of blaming it for all the economic woes every time we are in a slump. This takes me to my final point on our vanishing rights. Once upon a time, we used to harvest sea turtles for fiestas and other communal festivals. The feds came in and say, "It can no longer." We used to claim the exclusive economic zone two hundred miles out. The feds say, "Absolutely not." We used to manage our own immigration. The feds say, "No more. We will take over." We used to set our own minimum wage. The feds say, "No more." And by the way, if you see red wobblers on your property, you cannot harass the bird nor develop your property without paying the thirty-five thousand into the mitigation bank. But okay, as a consolation, no one else can own land there except you. And we're gonna say, "No." This is how ridiculous this sounds. Senate Initiative 22-1 must die. Thank you.
Salud para todos Sanzú, todos tu mundo, yo nací en Pichaylang pa siya chabébé. Itano, the land, the emotionu zu. The land has virtues. Everybody have land in Saipan. Right now, they told me, "Ang Pichaylang, axa bebé." You and, uh, and itanas, the only beach in Saipan. I don't know how true it is, but it's true. In nineteen fifty-four, my uncle from Guam were all Chamorros. Guam, Saipan, Morantia. Now, because the land belonged to my father, Karolínan. The Karolínan own the ocean, the Chamorro up on the mountain. And I like, "Oh, so, no?" They go, "Because the Chamorro are farmers, the Karolínan fishermen." So I said, "Oh, pu sa guaupalu." And this is, you know, I'm proving our culture. Some of our culture, okay, it's not very good. We're, we're all prejudiced. But I'm so glad that I'm a Karolínan and Chamorro. I got the land, uh, the ocean, and the land on the mountain, sa Karolínan Chamorro. So my uncle from Guam, and as you said, I progressed from Guam. Dimang pa veri ta de diñano, Article 12. Came, "Puniao, please, I wanna buy your land." "Just happen this." "Oh, this land in Guam." And you know, Niao, I mean, nineteen fifty-four, I'm not exaggerating. And everybody knows, right now, my house in Atuau. It was a very small wooden house, and we didn't have chairs. But my parents, they knew us, this is a Viki, you know, who did? I guess. They built their own chair sitting down. And he would lay on my father and my mother. He said, "Eh, you know, if you sell your land, you'll be no longer sitting in this homemade chair. You'll be sitting on the sofa." Uh-huh. Up to now, my god, man, you know, education is very important, and I'm so glad that we are educated, or else we sell to our land and the man or ta ki na. So please, keep Article 12. Bugwaja hanzu, zafiniti zu, zasenmagung zu, sa bu la migau, and parentish. They said, "Pichaylang, can we, we use your beach? Because I understand the public beach is already people, but yours is so private. Axa bebé." It's safe our land pu pa bordé, yula yuno, John." Mister, Senator Habsneider, huh? Bugwaja hanzu toru. So wa, ka, I love you. Sisus ma asi.
Good evening, Mr. Habsneider and Senator Villanueva. My name is Marie Solera Camotucasto. First of all, I would like to thank the twelve US who formed this Article 12 to protect us from outside scam of being taken advantage of from our investors. Land is our valuable asset. We are cash poor, but land rich. If we abolish Article 12, we have to take into consideration about property tax. Would this Article 12, keeping Article 12, will protect us from property tax? Our land and our people, we are poor here with cash. Where will we pay our land? From a long time ago, we never, uh, pay the land, but we take advantage of our land resources. We are really rich considering United States. Some people are living very poorly. But over here in this little island, we are living very comfortably because we have our land and we take advantage of our land resources. And this is the way we live. And, uh, land will always stay with us. Gas will disappear pretty soon. So I am in consideration of holding Article 12 for our people. Thank you very much.
For the benefit of the committee, how similar you are to English. Yeah, I cook a bit, so I'm bossy, yeah, I'm too kind. I'm more than just a city dog, too. Actually, I'd be a good guy, but I'm a little kid, you know. Okay, I'm a man, I'm a man, I'm a man. Anyway. Uh, lalí committee no atalistisian. There are five covenant provisions that cannot be amended without mutual consent. I repeat that mutual consent between Ozzy, between the San Martin government and the US government. What makes mutual consent? Okay? Now, what are the five provisions? Article one, United States covenant, political relationship. Article two, constitutional development. Article three, citizenship and nationality. Number four, section five oh one. Comes from Article five, and Article five deals with applicability of laws. Then we come to Article 12. Article 12, we didn't make Article 12. Article 12 is a derivative of Article eight. And came specifically from section eight oh five. So if you try to repeat, five covenant provisions cannot be amended without mutual consent. Article one, Article two, Article three, sections five oh one and eight oh five. I'd like the committee to really read this covenant. Well, it's gonna affect our relationship with the US. Mutual consent. That's a deep word between two political governments. Thank you.
After day, go all civiti, Giovanni Flores Arseni's and who support that Article 12. Everyone says that millennials don't care about culture. We just care about having followers and money, but it's not true. We care about our culture and our heritage. When it is seen a contus, contusil in Guajilo, you better believe that a parent's belt can teach you respect and help pass down what's important in life. But somewhere at the top of this list is land. Our blood is in our soil. You know what soil and blood have in common? They are full of water and full of life. Traditionally, land is not even owned by a single person. It's owned by a family. I believe that all of us NMD are one family. And as one large family, all NMDs should have to say yes before even one member of the family gets to sell. Opponents of Article 12 might say that the Northern Marana's descendants should not be a standard to own land. That's where they're wrong. It should be the standard because our soil is in our blood. Opponents of Article 12 say that they are doing this to better the lives of their children. Well, I'm a teacher, and I'll tell you that there are way more better ways to better your life than selling your land. You can tell your kids to study hard and go to college for free scholarships with grants. You can tell them to enlist in the military and you can tell them to learn a trade. But you do not have to sell your land to make a better life for yourself. Furthermore, leasing land for fifty-five years is more than enough time to recuperate business construction costs. Any business person will tell you that. I have heard that if I sell my land with ocean views in Navy Hill or Wallerai or Oliai to an outside investor, I can make more money. But you know what? I already feel like an investor because I am investing this land in my children. And I want this view that I enjoy to be for them, not for some tourists who like the pretty view. Lo, timar agredesti, i tamatamans, and isakati, who laknos grimi etra, so they could step on it. I wanna end with a part of our own anthem. Untum hava, the beginning of our national anthem is, "Gitalu, gihalu tasi, nagai gi, itano hu. Azu na sempri saga, malagohu." Which means, "In the middle of the ocean, that is where my land is. That's where I'll stay. It's my desire." This is the first promise anyone who sings our anthem makes. So from our own anthem, you can see that our people identify ourselves with our land. If you allow others to sell your small land in the middle of the ocean, what land are you gonna come back to? Make good on the promises. Defendi man lai night for fathers, defend itanotas, and itano itata mona, defend the Article 12. Sisus ma asi, maninados, and maniulos.
After days and one is not today. Chairman Kirigwa, Senator Nevers, Senator Ju, Senator DiMauri, Senator Vini, and Senator Cruz. Wahu, Liliana, MLH Habsneider. I'm here tonight on behalf of Matua Council for tomorrow advancement. Matua Council for tomorrow advancement is an Indigenous organization that advocates on the rights issues and concerns of importance for the protection, preservation, and advancement of the Indigenous people of the Mariana Islands. And I am here this evening to provide testimony on behalf of Matua Council regarding SLI twenty-two oh one, introduced by Senator Ju Habsneider, who is my beloved brother-in-law and the youngest of the kind. I will try to get composure because never in my dream, in the past decade and a half, that I've stood here before you, and three of you are still here, Senator Cruz, Senator Ju, and Senator Paul, who is not here today. In the last decade and a half, I have seen numerous legislative initiatives introduced in the upper house, the Senate, and the lower house. Senator Paul has introduced numerous, in numerous legislations. The last one was, I believe, in the tent legislature. Similar, but two pieces. In the lower house, there was the late with Doug Beckisso. The last one was Congressman Frank Delcruz. Congressman Joe DiMauri. The late Senator Rizovtimo. Senator Lieutenant Governor Arnold Palacios. And today, I'm here because my brother-in-law Ju decided to put his signature on the law. The land in the nation proposed it in section one. And I'm just gonna go through that because I'm trying to find, of all the things that write testimonies in the past decade, I keep going back to that piece of legislation, fifty. And I'm just gonna go through it. It says, and it's calling for, "The acquisition of long, of permanent and long-term interest in real property within the Commonwealth shall not," and this is a new one, "be restricted to Northern Marana's descent." And this is a new one. "Or any person may acquire a permanent and long-term interest in real property." Acquisition, in section two, they struck out the whole thing. Where it talked about who is eligible to own acquisition and what acquisition means as by sale, lease, give, inheritance, and others. We all know that there's a lot of fraud marriages in the San Martin. And one of that spouse, either the man or the woman, mostly the man, is married to a non-NMD. And we know what happened to those lands. Thank God for Article 12. Section three calls for permanent and long-term interest in real property. And the whole section, almost entirely, in its entirety, was stricken out. "The permanent and long-term interest in real property used in section one, including freehold interest and leasehold interest of more than fifty-five years, struck out, including renewal right, except an interest acquired above the first floor of a condominium building, any interest acquired above the first floor of a condominium building is restricted to present land, any land transaction in violation of this..." These are all stricken out. In a nutshell, what this meant, that if you have a building called a condominium and you are the landowner of the bottom, the person on the second floor will not, will not fight, will not fight with you to own the land at the bottom. Just like a one. Corporations, section five. This is another interesting point. A corporation shall be considered to be a person of Northern Marana's descent so long as the corporation is incorporated in the NMI, and that must be one hundred percent anyway. Now, it's gonna be stricken out and reduced to fifty percent. But the worst part of this is that now those people, whether they're not non-NMD, they can own land by the virtue of a corporation, in a nutshell. This legislative initiative actually calls for three, three parts. And I've heard some very creative work being done, but this is a very creative and practical legislation. In the past, I have stood before the House and the Senate going against opposing two pieces of initiative. One is to abolish Article 12, and the other one is the corporation to make, make non-NMD, MMD by virtue of corporation. This legislative initiative calls for three. To cure Article 12, to reduce the interest of NMD in a corporation, and also to affect condominium, land ownership by virtue of condominium. As I na konstamia. The rational, according to this legislative initiative, according to Senator Ju, that the rational to abolish this is no longer consistent with the need of the Commonwealth and its people. Well, more than a decade ago, and I will not forget, we asked you guys, Senator Ju and Senator Frank and Senator Paul, at one public hearing, to create a commission to study the impact of Article 12. That's ten years ago. None has been done. So how can we know where is the baseline? Where did you get your data? Thought that. More than forty years have passed. In fact, last month, we just celebrated forty-five years of the covenant. And it's true, thank God, that most of the lands are owned by NMD people. And some have mentioned about the economic conditions, and I have identified in the past. It always, this kind of bill always gets resurrected creatively when the economy stopped, because we get affected by the tourism and the financial conditions in Asia. The international and national agreement in the United States Congress that affects us, that affects the government. The pandemic, it's not today, and this is what we have. So this says that, and I heard Senator Ju's interview, I believe it's the radio or the TV, that said that he wanted to allow the people to exercise their right, their freedom and right. Well, we have to reexamine our freedom and our right as well because we don't vote for the President of the United States. We don't own, and some have echoed, hundred and ninety-seven, and on and on. You don't have that right. And you don't have that right to buy a, you don't have the right to drink or buy alcohol after two o'clock or ten o'clock at the store. You don't have that right. You don't even have the right to drive if you're fourteen years old. So what kind of right and freedom are we talking about? The right and freedom that this is talking about is called market bu taido, aka real estate. AKA foreign investors that have been here since nineteen seventy-nine in the Commonwealth. Some have been here since nineteen sixty-four. And now, they want, they are the pushers and promoters of this because I've seen this bill before. It's just more fractious. And it's pathetic that I have to stand up here to, to, to say my piece again. In fact, I wanted to do, I wanted to do a protest just to not say anything. So in the end, I wanted to always recommend, as always, you don't come up and say the issue, but I also wanna offer a solution, with all due respect. Let's work on Article eleven. There is hundred and ten million dollars of Marana's public land trust. There's fifty-eight million, if I'm not mistaken, that have been transferred to the general fund. And there's fifty million that the San Martin government got leased. And we're paying for that, the interest to pay for that is, we are paying for that, the payment for the government. So that's the, that's the thing that you guys, I'm recommending, that you guys look into Article 12. So all of us, the NMD, can benefit directly not to pay for government mismanagement, not to pay for the retirement, not to pay for, for the CUC, not to pay for, uh, the federal court for stipulated order, and on and on. Also, to amend Article eleven, it should not be to amend Article eleven to pay for the CUC infrastructure because we signed an agreement with the United States and we hold the United States citizens passport. The United States guaranteed a higher standard of living for all of us. Use the federal CIP, like CUC, lands and rights, etc. Sisus ma asi, and that's it. And I ask that Article 12 be a permanent law. That's what I'm asking from you guys. Sisus ma asi.
No. The, obviously, the, the neighbors of the legislature. So, I'm, 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 so, I'm, 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 so, I'm, 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 so, from Article twelve, so, 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 legislative initiative, one, so, 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 and three and four, so, 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 right, Senator? This means Chairman don't waste part three address, no? And the, 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 Mr. Chairman, uh, so, uh, so, the, 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 no, it's still, on, on, proposed to, on, so, like, I, reporting, no, economic, tax exemption, right? From five years to four years now. The tax impact, no? The social and economic. No, it's still favors, see? No, sita base amendment, no? Although, the, 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 it's still, okay, eh, eh, the, 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 the legislative, it's still zero-two, and zero-three. Molly, okay, see? The, 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 so, no, the, 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 power, eh? Powers of power, yeah, exactly. Emergency power, no, rather than, 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 when I'm, 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 so, I'm, 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 the, the, you know? Yeah, it's, 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 no? The, 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 use of power, eh? Then, man, the, 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 confirms the emergency. So, the, 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 no? Uh, the, zero-two, eh? Uh, it's still, it's still, when, 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 right, Mr., uh, Senator King Neighbors, no? Uh, it's still, no, favors, you know? As the, 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 it's still, no, 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 no position, right? Yeah, it's, 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 elected leader, eh? We're corporate, right? So, it's, 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 from, from, interview, or, 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 it's, 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 from, 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 so, you know? I'll second. So, anyway, when, 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 eh, eh, Senate, the legislative initiative, once, that, it's still, eh? You know, Teo? You know? So, eh, it's still, no, it's not, it's not, it's not, it's not, the, 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 the legislative initiative, eh? It's not, it's not, it's not. The, 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 although, it's, 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 no? No, 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 Senator Cruz, no? And it was, it was, it was, it was, it was, eh, nineteen seventy-six. Uh, it's like, it's, 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 Senator, the, 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 so, 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 I'm, uh, uh, similar, 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 and, 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 I'm a voter. So, it's, 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 okay, then, I'm, 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 no, uh, sixteen years old, so, eh? I was, I was, eh, nineteen seventy-six. So, I'm, 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 nineteen seventy-two. I was thirteen years old, thirteen, fifteen, so, eh? In the, eh, the, 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 Mr. Chairman, it explains that the, 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 you know? To type, to type, to type, eh, Article twelve and Article eleven, to type, to type, eh, section zero-five, eh, college, eh, cool, eh, oh, man, oh, yeah, it's cool, eh? The, the, eh, so, man, oh, no, so, eh? No? It's, it's, eh, eh, it's, it's, eh, eh, it's, eh, eh, no, it's, it's, eh, eh, it's, eh, eh, I'm, 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 then, 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 eh? So, eh, 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 Molly, it's, it's, eh, eh, eh? The, 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 eh, the, 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 eh, the, the, eh, 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 eh? It's, 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 personally. It's, eh, 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 eh? It's, 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 eh, 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 it's, it's, eh, 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 it's, it's, eh, 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 it's, eh, 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 second language, eh, English, third language, eh, 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 it's, eh, 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 it's, eh, 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 it's, eh, 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 it's, eh, 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 you know? Fourth language, eh, 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 the, eh, 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 it's, eh, 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 it's, eh, 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 the obligation, eh, 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 you know? It's, eh, 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 the, 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 you know? Honorable. It's, eh, 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 Mr. Chairman, and, 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 the, 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 with, 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 with. It, 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 so, it was, eh, it went in in nineteen seventy-four to seventy-six. And it, 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 eh, it's, eh, 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 it's, eh, 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 so, eh, 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 eh,[1227.62] Ma manu galon, lebih nu para, ato moktus besita, para sajin, ginu. Sis, timi gata, lo nyak, lo nyak sangonisot, dosi, pakti. Esti, di sion tawnu, ne, kore di sidi, koro ni vashet, timian. Sis, timi gata, tus, saipan, dan lukta, zasakta, bisla, matat pra visa. Lo, David, koma di sidi. Lagi, aijita ulu, koma prate tanu. Apa prate tanu, nu, teme to option ayu, visa prate tanu, section nero five. No, kusimian, dos nen, nu, adis pesa, imija saki minis. Apa tahi, i, koma ulu, si former Senator John Schneider, i Democratic Party, kaya nen, tutunya. Koflo sami, chilu, ma te tafta, sa stroke. Lo, ma no, one term na, four years, nuzuk. Sis, na, si Funtu no, ah, la, in, ah, DS, antila chiu, former Senator Dela Cruz. Jan, luki, Senator Nevek Nevers, yuna namu, ne, Honorable, ne, no, jamak, ne. Un, ta, tisi, yuna namu, kona, serbit, timian. Ya, pacha, oriku twaf, asokta, oriku eleven asokta, sama Lina Maulik. Sis, ki nineteen seventy seven, ne, I was, si, junior high school, Marans High School. Si Funtu Henry, eh, of Schneider, chilu, chilu tana dos. Ira, ten, tanu, na, agas, no educator. He was the first, ah, delegate, delegate, loki, ne, tinian, Asus Convention. Sis, mas sagadu, gi, sa, che, na, sa, coro, regis, si Funtu. Ntichel, lola, asa, ginu, si, eh, rimuta, enjoy, regis, ginu, bisan, tichen. Ten, na, ler, ten. Maktu, ne, si, Funtu, na, men, sabi, jan, ya, koma laga, ma no, pra hayat, stapa, tan, ten, tok. Sis, ki, bapa, na, man, mimiting. Sis, ki, toku, first exposure about land, town, I'm in second, no. And I'm good. Gi, na, mujin, di Carolina, na, first, trinina, no. Sis, toku, sata, toku, man, hafinas, ni, pa, fana, eight. Si, bapa. Sis, ki nineteen eighty five. Kajidu, di Asus Convention, nineteen eighty five. Chairman no, King Nevers. Jan, tao, ma Maulina, tao, he was there as a delegate, antila chiu, sa, nu, ah. Anyway, um, sorry, shenso. Um, visa delegate, ne, ne, tinian, si, ya, Indola, former mayor. Si, ah, talu, si, ah, Stephen King, former senator, was a delegate. Apa, ni, ne, he hired me to work for him. So, I see the mechanics of, ah, I was twenty-one-year-old there at that time. Invited for vacation, ne, tinian, from the University of Hawaii. Sis, uli, ne, no. Sis, before nineteen ninety, ninety, Asus Convention, ne. Chilu tana, talu, I, Senator, ah, no, David, was, eh, elected leader, di. Ma no, na, talu, chilu tana, si Henry, Schneider, the late Senator Schneider, and many others, ne. Lo, apparently, public, ne, ma, gunu, toku, di, bohre, la, the whole, Asus, third one. So, the issue here is, ah. Tu, ko, brindi, ne, dinak, na, man, nunjo, hafan, and so, bis. Si Funtu, no, di, chilu tana, this is, ah, successful, college, eh, director. Sow, ti, tu, mi, visa, tinian, saipan, wa, na, san, wai, prutehi, tanu, always. We, e, tu, man, onko, ne. Si Funtu Herman, di, chilu tana, no, until, ma, teman, atu, mas, Senator Cruz, and, ah, kato, Senator, tipu, kala, ne, temku, man, ma, tem, tinian. Komonu, si, Guntu Herman, ne, talinya. I, tanu, ne, tiba, reo, dan donggu. No, itaka, kona, donggu, di, northern, mariana, siji, northern, ayu, sumnia, gurkand, dan donggu, lo, semta, ku, ma, ra. No, ki, da, donggu, tiba, dan, tanu. Anu, gungu, ketu, ne, gurk, gurk, ma, man, su, ne, no, e, bulan, ya, ma, di, nan, chiu. Bulu, tasi, no, ti, tanu, that's why I said, say. Danu, utu, ma, nu, Senator, eh, Brad, na, spetsu, di, aw, na, chairman, and, ki, offensive, stilla. Utu, ma, na, bulu, gen, nu, zom, special interest, gu. Ki, tanu, utu, ma, gen, nu, na, i, governor, Torres, sa, pasia, ekungu, pa, gu, Lieutenant Governor, nu, palosha, ekungu, dan, toku, di, ma, di, sumnia. Ma, create, iti, strategic economic council, prior to the executive order decision, governor, Torres, iti, i, governors council, and economic, ah, bottom, kana, na, di, ah. Public and private partnership. Gurus, ya, buku, man, maloti, dan, man, di, ku. Dan, na, na, powerful, dos, na, power, either you're powerful, in, constitution, like, governor, elected leader. Or you're powerful, because you have the body, or you're powerful, because you're knowledgeable. This, that, if, when you have the power, from the government, to the private sector, even, to the church, ito, the Catholic Church. The issue is so powerful, every school, when it says like this, everybody say, oh, yeah, na, ya, government, tagali, you know, and, ma, li, na, bulu, ma, kontra. I'm doing legislation, gonna be, in, kentra. So, ah. Domo, pasutus, no, do, di, no, un, zot, une, exercise. Senator, Senator. Because she elected leader, lo, guna, na, man, san, ma, mu, ke, kesa, na. No, obkuzu. Obligations, di, pa, di, kentus, di, kobe, ku, nu, oru, sa, nu, professional, bu, bapa. Gobu, bulu, ma, na, na, ma, na, bak, misyu, tinzangan, eh, seventeen years ago, dan, na, ma, wa, sa, nu. Gun, ah, senators, and then chairman, dan, I was Senator Frank, sa, ma, ma, no, ki, di, no. Two, three, four years, ikut, antin, na, ma, diskutis, ku. Professional, dan, maktu, ne, pa, gu, di, di, ma, mu, ne, para, lupa, kagan, para, maktu, tinian. Ona, pasi, kutu, na. Bisita, di, hati, serangka, sa, kajidu, ta, great, ah, Ramo, eh, si, na, na, ta, tao, ta, si, ona, Dela Cruz, Bella Gomes. Kajidu, maktu, di, dat, ginindan, di, ya, na, kajidu, di, to, tinian, ginindan, na, na, maktu, ma, di, infant, na, ma, du, du, lang, di, to, to, ta. Bu, find out, later. Jan, na, 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 ma, di, sa, yal, lima, na, ma, na, bapa. Sa, yaman, yang, dan, tak, i, spenget. Jan, ma, di, mu, wa. Na, na, pati, ya, untungan, ogun, ma, aten, in, aten, ma, di, pasi, ma, na, aten, Sius, Masi. Ah, toku, na, aten, first, is, ya. Sa, nu, man, yel, ne, Sabeg, Son, is, bar, sangani. Lo, ma, ma, man, san, san, no, sa, pa, tirak, ya, nu, tu, ma. There's a lot of them out there, I don't speak in English, I oppose this, those, the legislative initiative, zero one. Sa, three thou, three hundred, three thousand two hundred Marines, almost Marines, down there, American, whole part. They fought against the brutal Spanish, Japanese Imperial Army. Hundreds and hundreds of Chamoros died, and many others, even Carolinas, and, ah, Koreans. Anu, pa, na, panse, yulu, na, zutis, ya, di, bapa, nu, no, bulu, ma, ma, tem, liyan. Ma, ma, sakit, ta, no, ta, di, Spanish, ma, sakit, ta, no, ta, di, Liman, eh, ma, Chilean, Liman, ma, Spanish, model. Is it three thousand two hundred, na, Marines, ne, ah, or, si, ma, na, i, tanu. Forty-five years, now, we're gonna, give it all to the foreigners, no, I don't think so. It's not good for the generations to come, we have to protect our, like, our future generation, ni, dokto, tamu, sa, dan, in, Carolina. Yes, Mr. Chairman?
Nga, pero, fun, yentus, ne, sa, di, fashion, go, kubod, ko, ah, senior, and, halogia, dan, fano, eh, prateredar, kuma, lu, sa, Sius, Masi.
Lo, ah, you know, I speak in English, I'm, I spoke a lot, and some more. You know? Oh, sorry. Ah, for the record, I'm Richard, and, talan, Senator Junior. You know, I'm, tomorrow, tokto, tamo, I will sit soon, and, a boarder. Ah, I oppose, you know. My, ah, youngest brother, Senator Junior of Schneider, in parity. He has a constitution duty to do that. But I have a constitution duty and obligation, moral, cultural, to stand here, to talk to, and to talk to his members of the Senate. The, no, Senator Cruz, ne, I never heard of you oppose, or, against, always abstention. You know, you're a senator from Pinia for many years, you're an enforcement, you've been a senator, you're a smart guy. Make a decision, are you against, or, and, or not, when you vote? Because you were abstaining, from ten years, or more, and, please, Mr. Chairman, ah, Kirwa. I support Senate Legislative Initiative Zero Two, all the way to the fourth, when, with amendments. But, Senate Legislative Initiative Zero One, is not good for the future generation. You know, I'm a multiple cancer here, I'm protecting it for my kids, si Isa, si Land, and si Jul. And hopefully, I have blankets, and for all the Chamoros here, and of all the indigenous Carolinas, that we allow them to own land. And the irony about it is that, our southern, southern Marianas, in Waha, ne, the Chamoros, which we have families down there, in San Pablo, they, they cannot own land here. So, we have, we are doing, we have to correct injustice, that's all I'm saying. And this Senate Legislative Initiative Zero One, its entirety and injustice against us. Sius, Masi, Mr. Chairman, Kirwa, and Sius, Masi, Mr. Carl, King Nevers, you're a freshman senator here, and Senator Ides. You know, speak independent mind, I know you guys are groups here, Republican, Democrat, Independent. But this issue is very critical for future generations. And now, Mr. Chairman, and, ah, once again, Chairman, ah, King Nevers, congratulations, again. And your young generation, please, ah, decide objectively. Sius, Masi, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and, thank you, no, Brad, Senator, Senator of Schneider, and thank you, Senator Ides, Philongue, and, thank you, Senator Cruz. And thank you, Senator Vinsalang, the professional, zom, Senator Cruz, and, you know, we've grown, we've grown this. And all the members, we've grown this, and let's do some more discussion, not the five minutes, or ten minutes, or the five, because I cannot talk. And I haven't even discussed about personal rights, and indigenous rights. Just, run a sixty-minute indigenous right, it takes about thirty minutes to an hour, we can talk maybe to five months. So, open up more, ah, public hearings, in saipan, Sius, Masi. And thank you, Mr. Chairman, both, thank you, Senator Sublan, thank you, Senator Cruz, and thank you, Mr. Ides, Philongue, and thank you, no, Brad, Sius, Masi. And sorry for the people are waiting out there. I know, and the violence provided, actually, please be objective when you write about our indigenous movement. Because the media seems to be not, they're anti, anti-indigenous. You're from the right, and, I don't privilege, you know, it's not a right, it's a privilege to be in the media. So, report objectively, because I've been seeing things, we see soon against the Chamoros in the media, thank you, Sius, Masi. Yeah, and Sius, Masi.
Yo, ben, ben, as, not, is, para, to, du, yela, kajidu, bapa, na, bapa. Nu, sen, asan, ju, ne, tadi, kaulu, ta, ikini, lo, sin, ibadlu, maktu, ju, sa. Da, antis, di, bi, kaulu, minis, ta, leggi, tu, umu, is, si, na, ngentus, au, pa, man, mas, onan. Da, to, za, umu, na, perun, au, bu, lamu, ni, tanu. Nu, siji, obin, na, boi, ni, kumintus, za, na, edik, komu, de, siji, afu, fi, ona, ni, boi. Anju, ni, sen, anju, ni, ma, mogas, ne, anju, ni, ma, mogas. Ta, kilu, na, rispetu, no, yang, di. Sa, ma, ma, hajikan, ju, ni, tau, toku, pa, shet, tai, tau, toku, sa. Lo, ma, lango, ju, na, para, in, kom, pen, disti, za, pen, timu, na. Itau, toku, ni, ma, ma, di, itau, toku, ni, bu, motan, ju, istigi, ma, spektet, ta, gi, zam, ju. Di, pinjegi, Maulik, para, sia, di, pinjegi, baba, Maulik, para, sia. Rom, putahi, i, tanu, dan, itau, toku. Istigi, istigi, si, na, man, hajikan, ju, na, man, to, ta, singan, ju, pa, gu, sa, berjegi, Maulik, para, sia, dan, para, tanu. Siti, ma, putesti, di, misisori, na, brajegi, must, es, di, bi, ba, di, kule, ma, na, college. Ki, zom, wa, common sense, di, mos, ipu, panting, ini. Kyun, taiti, istigi, yene, man, is, tu, du, di, college. Ki, common sense, isti, na, kajidu, au, bu, must, tumu, au, pa, in, kom, pen, di, gi, tau, toku. Pe, re, di, un, asu, iso, i, iso, un, asu, i, kom, pen, di, itau, toku. Ma, na, na, ma, so, bi, sa, bisan, onan, na, maktu, kes, ti, umu, ti, na, ga. Di, ta, ma, na, na, kumet, kentus, gini, na, na, jau, di, na, tau, toku. Or, spet, ta, di, sa, kom, pen, di, ak, le, nya, ma, la, za, di, no, yang, ju, un, senti, ma, put, na, hip, lu. Ata, mesi, ata, mesi, kalu, mi, ju, sa, si, ku, lo. Timan, pareo, mi, ne, dun, nya. Suk, ma, nyelu, suk, ma, nyelu, sa, si, ku, na, ma, nyelu, ni, ngaya, na, fa, pareo, dun, nya, habitu, behavior, dan, ikus, sumbi, nya. Ni, ngaya, na, fa, pareo, kontu, di, faces, dan, ikun, ha, ni, ngaya, na, pareo. Sumi, ju, tau, ta, dan, ona, lu, timan, pareo. Lo, bisan, onan, ya, ya, lu, mi, si, ku, ne, kusino, di, dosi, ga, lu, ki, unu, bi. Unu, bi, lu, ki, u, das, jesti, na, ne, lu. Bisan, onan, ju, kom, inti, mu, histori, ni, si, kristu, ne, dosi, na, di, sa, ipu, umu, deng, di, si, du. Pu, jesti, na, ku, ma, ne, di, dis, si, 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 di, para, Republiku, ma, na, na, ma, so, bi, sa, iso, nu. Na, Maulik, si, si, mu, fa, nasu, Maulik, bu, sa, zon, common sense, di, good, common sense, to, na, si. Est, bu, du, na, sangan, ku, di, or, ikut, wa, ma, na, pa, gu, zuk, tu, pa, di, sangan, istigi, na, gu, ma, gi, mu, gu. A disturb, a disturb, i, komunitat, sang, na, eh, pa, di, lan, si, di, or, ikut, wa, na, para, in, sangan, ju. So, far, na, para, in, sangan, est, ku, arin, trenta, onus, trenta, si, ku, onus. Ata, fan, ku, ku, man, nyam, na, lamu, pa, man, masuk, suki, pa, na, na, fa, chat, ta, gu. Mo, sa, na, fa, bu, ni, tu, mo, sa, na, fa, ngip, suki, mo, sa, ma, ni, ta, ka, nu, pa, ura, tempu. Ja, bis, perun, 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 sangan, di, or, ikut, wa, gini, ma, nu, na, eh, inti, ni, tu, perun, ku, sud, de, na, mu. Ta, di, beri, piti. Ma, na, na, bisan, onan, ju. Si, ku, na, kalu, lon, mu, ma, si, ma, nyel, na, di, timan, pareo, ju. Unu, de, na, klor, si, na, timan, pareo, mi, dun, nya, kontu, di, dun, nya, di, kalu, lon, mi, ju. Ya, lu, mesi, na, kau, lu, om, gi, ju, na, ga, u, das, ga, u, das, ya, lu, mesi, na, kau, lu. Aden, na, fa, malefa, aden, na, fa, malefa, misti, si, mo, Sius, Masi, dan, pa, man, asu, Maulik. Ma, na, asu, iso, kun, disturb, beri, piti, pa, lu, in, disturb, i, komunitat, di, hafap, lan, mimit, di, pan, cekwi. Ti, tay, wi, misti, sa, moro, hodi, sa, moro, uran, ju, sa, moro. Basta, man, ma, ma, baba, na, pa, Maulik, kam, na, tau, toku, sa, ma, gua, izan, ju, na, Republiku, edu, na, man, kagan, ju, gini. Nu, Sius, Masi, di, entesion, da, nu, ut, la, sangan, ti, hafap, ta, trus, belang, la, 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 tumu, na, na, dan, na, ok, eh, ut, tu, ta, lu, dan, na, bin. Zan, na, ta, bin, na, tu, man, ju, na, siji, na, na, to, ta, singan, ju, pa, gu, jan, tu, fa, man, sim, bani, dosan, ju, dan, man, bani, dosan, ju, sa, ma, gua, izan, ju, di, Republiku. Lo, mu, na, asu, iso. Putahi, tau, toku, zom, putahi, tanu, od, si, tau, toku, am, ju, za, han, ju. Na, na, ti, mina, pu, den, na, uran, ju, kule, u, ma, ma, loti, tau, toku, ju, des, ta, pa, gu, di, ti, ti, ma, ha, Maulik, dan, baba. Kom, pen, di, mu, na, Maulik, gi, yo, sa, bulu, kambalan, mi, ju, ay, sus, no, na, lu, di, pa, ma, nu, si, bati, sa, ma, bu, dan, ge, in, no, na, tanu. Pu, sa, di, dan, ge, au, bu, i, i, ita, ju, ni, cum, cu, di, tanu, pu, es, um, ben, di, di, mi, ju. To, na, eh, sa, ma, bu, tanu, nya, om, ka, la, mu, ke, di, mi, ju, zom, apa, ku, tumu, nya, kon, ka, la, mu, ke, di, di, la, ho, ne, pi, di, nu, ne, mu, na, asu, se, baba, nu. No, i, sa, ma, bu, ni, tanu, adis, tau, om, ku. Sius, Masi, ya, da, du, be, su, cital. Dan, di, go, si, go, si, use, na, puti, santus, nu, cham, ru, tokto, saipan, ju, ah, ok, est, adus.
Good evening. Alpha, day, kiro, five, ro, valu. Senator, Senator of Schneider, Senator, De Don, Guerrero, Senator, Bi, Sablon, Senator, Frank Dela Cruz. And, and I, Frank Cruz, and I also like to acknowledge the president of the two standing committee chair. The honorable Chair, Senator Nevers, and the honorable Senator Gusto Kirwa. My name is Melvin Faizal. I am the Executive Director for the Chamorro-Carolinan Language Policy Commission. A traditional healer, and as well as a member of the Carolinan Clan, Warga. And I'm also a Chamorro descendant from the Catingting, Sablon, and as well as the Taisekan from Rowan. I'm here to express in my, my support of Senate Legislative Initiative Twenty-two, that's, zero, two. And I submissively request the members of this committee to stand and join as I present my testimony on Senate Legislative Initiative Twenty-two, that's, zero, one. I would like to also salute, a honorable salute to the first speaker, Mr. of Schneider. For those comments that he made, I believe it worth the salute from me. So, I begin with why languages. Our Chamorro and Carolinan language in this Commonwealth allow us to share and communicate culture, worldviews, knowledge systems, values, traditions, customs, history, spirituality, and social and political identity to future generations. Our languages are living. They come from the land, and they are integral to our sense of self and essential aspect of self-determination. Despite their importance, the Northern Marianas indigenous language in this great Commonwealth are in danger of disappearing if this Twenty-Second Northern Marianas Commonwealth Legislature House of Senate pass this Senate Legislative Initiative Twenty-two, oh, one. This Senate Legislative Initiative Twenty-two, oh, one, in its original form as introduced, does not exercise to provide any form of assistance of legal rights to the indigenous language programs for the Chamorro and Carolinans in the Senate. With that said, I respectfully request the Senate Standing Committee on Resources, Economic Development and Program, and Judiciary Government to immediately engage the abortion procedure to this Senate Legislative Initiative Twenty-two, oh, one, without any form of procession. I humbly request that a member of this Senate august body reintroduce an initiative or legislation that show establish or create legal assurance for adequate, sustainable, and long-term funding and support for indigenous led initiatives that reclaim, revitalize, maintain, and strengthen indigenous languages. As we all know, that language is the umbilical cord of art and culture. So, I hope that this august body would revisit the Marianas Public Land Trust, and allow funding for our indigenous language program, as well as reduce the public auditor fee as established by law by giving seventy-five percent out of that to the Indigenous Affairs Office, Carolinan Affairs Office, and the Chamorro-Carolinan Language Policy Commission. Allow me just one minute, I know that you've put up a sign. In closing, I humbly take this opportunity to express respect for indigenous people, the Chamorro-Carolinan of the Senate, and recognize their enduring relationship with the land. I will raise awareness about marginalized aspects of history that, ah, that attempts to deteriorate or exponentially exterminate the Serri-Chamorro and Carolinan language. Sius, Masi, on, one, de, kom, wa, ma.
Men, as, not, truth, and, Rob, na, congres, Senator, Mr. Chairman. And, ah, bro, si, ni, start, na, kajid. Sius, Masi, di, bu, ni, ju, put, para, le, tu, ka, pasi, ni, ta, tao. Bu, wa, wa, na, eh, ne, mi, para, aw, di, ne, ekstesa, to, na, na, tu, man, di, na, ma, ni, stoku, lo, wa, ni, u, si. Ke, ki, ma, stoku. Sa, pu, na, sol, ke, bu, kult, na, ku, ma, baa, li, sa, or, ikut, wa, iti, ki, si, ni, tek, ku. U, lo, sa, or, ikut, wa, na, i, kar, et, asti, ta, tu, la, la, bu, gi, di, tanu. Ma, na, zuk, tu, kar, di, ta, gak, ta. Ya, kajid, ma, na, pu, si, na, as, di, kar, di, ta, gak, ta, pa, gu, car, lak. Au, di, si, na, i, ta, tao, ta, mani, man, pa, sa, di, si, sa, na, kar, et, ta. Dan, ge, ta, gwa, ta, ge, ta, gwa, or, ikut, wa, pu, es. Ma, kajid, tokto, ta, gi, ta, si, or, ti, si, pu, si, na, bu, bu, sa, i, i, bo, ti, u, ju, ha, lu. Tu, na, ku, bar, na, 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 di, tanu, ni, gazi, o, di, si, na, ma, u, ju, di, kar, di, ta, gak, ta, di, ma, pa, gu, sa, pa, kar, et, ta, di, su, pa, gu, di, ta, ta. Siji, na, as, na, kajid, ju, ach, ka, ma, la, u, ju, lo, bi, al, nya, u, gu, bu, kult, re, or, ikut, wa. Pu, si, na, Rob, na, na, grun, congres, tu, put, fa, bu, as, di, na. Go, si, na, to, ju, pinaw, na, ma, re, ham, anau, Chamorro, ta, tau, Carolinan. Al, na, ju, isto, re. Na gayi opi ji. Ka bui sti, to ti pu ma shisi ni, ni devu na sora ki pu ni gi rosi gi ni. Ni mani, to ri mangatso. Ani ma pasinjo, apa ra aadijo, ikku basa to ri marreham. Ra pa uku Chamorro na Carolinian. Unu ra India le gi apa ra Chamorro. Uju ju gi aishku rokiu pa uku ra bi lu pu, se taistru. Lu tuu gu gi man daan na roti gi rokobuli karu ya. Anyway, ku zukitui sukaa saiku, lu tuu gu guam lu yu ngan, etikis Chamorro. Na ta ku jotsu na Roris ra ha uku Carolinian. Na ni ta po ku ti tuu ha uku Carolinian sa ki wa ra di na ya pu ti ra ba ti tuu. Lu ku ha uku otikeli zoku. Na ta pa ra na Carolinian muu otikeli zoku i, uku tuu man gi kusmaa chaarli no. Ni o biu ku. Ni ku di na gatsi Carolinian. Sa apa ba siya so se na, ilona palabra. Zidus uli gi kusmaa chaarli na sa pu ri chaarli. Ni ku yu no kusmaa chaarli ni ya, ya, gatsi Carolinian ni o biu ku. Na pa ugi di na klaas ni ya gi kofeso haru, baru ya ba warasiu. Baru lu ku ya kofeso ni ya, ti swen chaarli ni issa kusmaa chaarli ku. That's what came to my mind, it's one ni. I don't know how that thing got in your mind ku. I don't know too. But I'm so proud of myself, ya. That's what came to your mind, yes. Pa ra ta man pa ku di rikutwau ta gayi. Ta ma ni gi gi karu tagbaka na, mi da sti gi ga gi gi tano. Na gin tagi ju ra karu tagbaka. Aru chinau ba duu na ha nu bu chinau muu sae boti. Ki buu wa ya da su bastav. Aru ta po ku boti ma ta la ka gi tano. Ra kare tana gi tano, gi tano na. Pa tagbaka ma nuu sta karlak. Ki saa gi gi na ku paru shor. Apa na bahri bui tano. Ni ku sunu era na kamari ki yes. Lu ta ju bu na kamari ki. Sa ku te tei taatau gi tano danai. Ni gi ku ni karu ya ni ya rikutwau para wau. Ni ku ku ni nisun, pa ri saa rikutwau. I can drive my kare tagbaka to America. I'm talking about my time, these hours, a little boy. August aga gi gi be seventy-three. Asu na ke pu, kare tagbaka sta chinau na ora. Asu wa ra ikku na ku kuntu ra i rikutwau ku bu. Ni ku na ku paru shor Roris rikutwau ku tau. Asu kare tagbaka da pa uku ke pu. Ta na gin tagi nau, ku ka yo ge lu ku gi tasi. Pu ra ti tuu gu man agu man musav. Na manu mister chairman ta, na trokini man gayi na robi na kungresu. Zidus musiya den pumidjo na, rava sau misama nu tuu man ga ke pu ja pumidjo. Ke li pa tano ba uki ri buo tano ya gi buo chi apa misama. Uda misama nu kutu pa bu, anu ra di mangai ya tori dot, ku iski ra sunu gi gi se tibu. Kutu pa bu pulu, pulu chinau rikutwau muu na manala ora. Sa pulu ki ni la la. Roris sau ka gi karu tagbaka pa uku ucha bi talota.
Good day. Half a day and good evening, senators. It's, uh, um, it feels, honestly, it feels somewhat odd being here to talk about Article 12 because this is something that I thought a lot about. And, and back when I was at NMC more than fifteen years ago, in the current issues class, I thought about, "Why can't I own land? Is that fair?" And growing up, I used to wonder, like, "Why did we have to rent? And why did we have to lease, and we couldn't, you know, land it?" Because I didn't want to be different. This is my home. This is all I've known, grown up. I didn't want to be special. I just wanted to be equal and free with everyone here. And in this legislative finding, Senator Hoxley talked about. He talks about rights, he talks about liberty, he talks about, you know, open markets, money and freedom, and I'm like, "Okay, great." I am grateful for this public hearing because my conscience is asking me to oppose this amendment, Article 12. Because it's not fair that Washington DC can print gobs of money to inflate the real estate market right now in the US. It's not fair that foreign interests can come in and buy these buildings and then just walk away and let them rot and neglect them to pollute our island and not have to live here and stay here. Yes, our land is, it's part of our language. It's, it's, it's not my native language. This is a land I was growing up. And I wouldn't trade that. I love this island, and I do not want us to sell it to Beijing or Wall Street. In fact, let me tell you what Wall Street insiders are talking about right now. We believe right now is the time to sell our land, to sell this land. Ray Dalio, a Wall Street insider, says right now, "Cash is trash because of how much money is being printed. So we're going to sell our land for trash." Right now, China, Beijing, is rolling out a government-backed cryptocurrency. They're printing more money, they're experimenting with new ways of doing currency. Is it fair that we don't have that right? It's not an open market. I agree that we need to launch an investigation to determine what we should do and how we can update some of these laws and how we can best administer these lands. But it's not to just willy-nilly open up this somewhat broken market with foreign interests that are juggling our fate. There's a lot happening right now. It feels like history is hanging in the balance. And as someone who's not a senior my descent, I implore each one of you senators to oppose this bill. This is not the time, and this is not the way to sell our culture, our language, and our inheritance. I know someone who did. Esau sold his inheritance for a bowl of porridge. Is that the memory that you want to carry with you? Thank you for making this opportunity available for someone like me to support in this important monumental effort to figure out how we can bring prosperity to this island again. And if I might suggest ideas, alternatives, to just selling for this trashy, cashy US dollar or one right now, there's opportunities for us to, yes, bring our land, bring this land, tokenize it through blockchain and other cryptocurrency auctions. This is a matter of sovereignty, and we don't need to sell our sovereignty to Beijing or Wall Street. Let's launch a real commission, do some research, and be accountable to this people for the future of our inheritance. At least, history tells us that we've sold our inheritance for a bowl of porridge. Thank you, and I ask each of you to vote according to your conscience.
Yes, my name is Justin Benson, and I'm grateful that this is my home. And I've been here since I've been five years old. And I plan to raise my children here.
That's very powerful for somebody that's not from a northern Indian country. Man gaidanita no ta. Tama labu, wa du dahit, parpa tete hit. And I just, I'm very honored to be behind you.
Ah, good evening, senators, our chairman and Mr. President. My name is Josh Salubah. I'm the executive assistant for Carolinian Affairs. And I am here to present to you on behalf of my family and my followers, people, that we are hosting this initiative. But before I start, I'd like to say a prayer. Thero lag, thero sa, lope. And this is what my late uncle, former executive assistant Rokujio Binzi, always used as an opening remark for making his speech. And it says, "Respect the skies, respect the ocean, and respect our soil." That's leading to land. Without these things, we're just ordinary people just like anybody else. I wrote a statement, but I'm gonna stick to my guts and just say what I have. We don't have land, we don't have our identity, our culture, our custom, our tradition. Everything is up. We are people of the CNMI, that's who we are. We need to let everybody know that Commonwealth CNMI is nothing compared to our great America. No way. We're a dot on the globe, a dot. We're nothing compared to California, no way. We need to sit back and rethink what we're doing. It's our children's future. It's our children's future. We have an influx of all these fellow brands that are helping other people who instead of us trying to assist them in ways to get those assistance, we are here to talk about our land. I'm not here to be against you guys. I'm here because I want to work with you guys. We are one people, Chamoros and Carolinians of this land. Let's work together for us, for our children, and for our future. I love you all. Viva Marianas, viva the followers, viva Chamorro. Thank you.
Hi, good evening, everyone. My name is Jerry Gisire, and I'm a Northern Marianas descent of Saipan. I was born and raised here in the CNMI, and I love the CNMI. It's my home. My grandfather was raised here, my mom was raised here, my dad was raised here. Generations after generations after generations were raised here. And you've come, we've come here today at this standpoint in our life. Look in the back of us, there are people behind us, there are people that left already, but there are still people behind us opposing this initiative. Why? Because it's wrong. Not just legally, not just morally, it's also wrong emotionally. It drains us physically, mentally. Right now, I feel humiliated to be a Chamorro. I feel humiliated to be a Carolinian. Why I feel humiliated to stand on this island? I feel humiliated to stand behind this podium and talk to you guys. Because people out there in the world want what we have. They are asking for what we have. Article 12 is something that Hawaiians dream for, something that Native Americans dream for. But what are we doing it? What are we doing for it? We're throwing it away. Why? Because of a dollar here, a quick buck there, an investor coming in here, Bill Condominian there, Hoto Street there. Is it worth it? Hell no, not in my opinion. Excuse my Dutch. My opinion, what does it matter, right? I'm young. I might be ignorant, I might be arrogant, cocky. But I stand here for a reason, and the reason is to protect our land. For without our land, we are nothing. I remember a moment in my life when my dad told me a very special thing. I dropped my ice cream on the ground. I was about six, five years old, and I started crying. I cried so hard. Why? Because I wanted my ice cream. I wanted it so bad. My dad told me, "Am kilputotmo." And I said, "Why?" I still started crying. "Hulu pa itano sa itano mananai it." "Itano mananai it." "China, manyanahu." "Manyanit." "Itano mananai it." That's all I have to say. I might not be a great Chamorro speaker, but I can speak English pretty well. Without the land, we are nothing. Senator Jude Hoxley, I respect you because you are a senator. I respect all of you. You're all senators here, but we're all people. Saipan, Rota, Tinian, the CNMI in general. We're all impoverished. We are under the line of poverty. None of us can make a thousand dollars in two weeks. It's really hard. And you guys are expecting to do this Article 12 for investors to come in, maybe for profit, I don't know. But not for me. This is not for profit, this is for personal gain. That's my opinion. But we also have to look at it in other aspects as well. And this is the rebuttal that maybe the people who support this initiative will come into play. They say, "Go laun, go lamun, sata nohu." "I'm a lago vivendi tanohu." Vivendi, sata nohu, no? That's what everybody's gonna say. That's the rebuttal. But is it really, is it really important to say that? Understand that it's your land. Understand that you're supporting it because you want to make a million dollars with an investor that comes in. But what about the other people? We have a right to protect this land too. You have a right to your property. We have a right to our rights, and our rights is to protect this land. And I stand here today, and people here who sit behind me and who stood before me said the same thing. Maybe some of them said different things because I didn't hear the whole thing. But they want to protect the land. We want to protect the land. I was watching the public hearing in Rota, and that's what that guy said. He said, "Go lamun, sata nohu." How can you call yourself Chamorro if you're gonna do that? In all honesty, how can you call yourself a Chamorro? A Northern Marianas descent who was born on Saipan, on Tinian, on Rota, wherever. Your parents taught you to protect the land, your parents taught you to protect your children, your parents taught you to protect your life and everything that you hold dear. Right? You can't answer because it's not a Q and A session. But they taught you. It might not even be your parents, your guardian, your friends, your peers, your coworkers. They taught you these fundamental morals, ethics come into play. Excuse me, just give me some more time. But all of this come into play. And if you want to destroy what Article 12 upholds, the basic foundation of Chamoros and Carolinians to protect our heritage, to protect our culture, to protect our identity and our language, then I don't know what to do. I've never stood in a public hearing. I'm nervous as hell. But these people brought me here. My courage to stand against and oppose this initiative brought me here. You wanted it as a, to spread awareness to my recollection, to my knowledge, Mr. Senator Jude Hoxley, to invigorate conversation, topic about it? And yes, it did, but this is not the right way. This is not the right way. We could've done it differently. We could've had campaigns, we could've had sessions outside of the public hearing. But we did it here with a proposal. In my opinion, that's not right. It's like stabbing us behind our backs. You went against a moral code. You're a Chamorro yourself. You're a descendant of Tinian, right? Don't you love your land? Don't you love your island? Don't you love your people? They voted for you because they love you and we respect you. And if I was in Tinian and I probably heard your campaign, I would vote for you because you sound like a decent guy. You look like a decent guy. And your brother said it too. He said, "You're the younger brother." He loves you. I don't know you personally, but I feel the need to love you too because we're Chamorro, because we're Northern Marianist descent. But what's happening? You stab us behind our back and you wanna do this? Thank you. Romplu das isus masis and dosna di kike. Adios, sir.
Good evening. My name is Victoria Egil Panina, and I am against the Senate Initiative 22-01. I have spoken to many of my peers in Kaken High School. And I am speaking not only on my behalf, but for them also. This initiative has brought up a lot of questions. For example, can the government sell land? Will we be taxed? The initiative states new and better opportunities for financial security. But for whose security and for how long? Will we be renting our own land from foreigners? Will there be more homeless people in the CNMI? And who gets to vote? Law states that every US citizen can vote, but they never specify that they can vote for our land. And I believe that only NMD should vote because this is our land and only our voices should matter. In the last census that was taken in 2010, there was about 300,000 plus people in the CNMI. And the survey was done in 2017, and there was only about 35,000 Chamoros and Carolinians. We are the minorities, the NMD are the minorities in our own island. Most of our relatives haven't even gotten their homes back. This whole initiative is a double-edged sword. Like line 12 to 13, second paragraph states that NMD should be allowed the freedom and liberty to exercise their full property rights. Can I be honest? I think it's sugarcoated. This line is telling us that we would get to choose what we want to do with our own lands. But is it really our choice? Most of the people in CNMI, if not all, are struggling. If Article 12 was removed, we would most likely have to pay tax, which would corner those that can't afford to pay land tax and they have no choice but to sell or lose their land. Instead of trying to abolish Article 12, why not try and figure out a way to make Article 12 permanent? Because the United Nations placed Article 12 so the indigenous people do not get exploited. All I'm asking our leaders is to think of us, the future of generations. Let us be heard when we make something that is important to our future. Thank you for your time.
Good evening, members of the Senate. Thank you for your continued patience and attention during tonight's hearing. My name is Franny Tenorio Demopon, and I am a person of Northern Marianist descent. I am a granddaughter of the late Jose Ansolirati Tenorio, a mother of two and a young attorney. And I stand here today to express my firm opposition to Senate Legislative Initiative 22-1. I have had the unique privilege of seeing both sides of this issue, of being raised in the traditions of the Marianas and also living and being educated in the US. And I can firmly tell you today that Article 12 is our last saving grace. Similar to Hawaii, we are perfectly positioned in the Pacific for foreign development, for military-related acquisition, and for resort expansion. Yet to this day, Native Hawaiians continue to fight in order to take back control of their land because they are tired of outside interests influencing their day-to-day activities. They grieve the loss of their land, similar to the way we grieve the loss of a loved one. To Native Hawaiians, no amount of financial gain is worth the eradication of their culture. Mark my word, if we pass this initiative, we will be outnumbered. We will be outfinanced. History has shown that lifting the restrictions on land alienation inevitably price out indigenous people to the point where we no longer recognize the very place we call home. We cannot be naive about the long-term repercussions of this initiative. Homelessness, landlessness, the degradation of our natural resources, unequal economic development, the treatment of our culture as a mere commodity, and the exploitation of our people. We cannot allow westernized thinking to dominate our local ideals. Our land is sacred, rich in history and worthy of our protection. Keep native land in native hands. Thank you.
Good evening, Senators. Thank you for being here. My name is Manny Tenorio Costura. I am here. Everything I say is based on my personal belief and in no way reflects the place I work. So I stand here against this bill, strongly against it. I know there's so many different statements that were made earlier. But I wanna take it back to vernacular and just say a few words before I get into the rest. You know, I I left Saipan after Aqua Junior High School, the eighth grade. My grandfather brought me up, Tenorio, to further my education. And there's a lot of things you learn being out in the States, and you realize how precious what we have here in the CNMI. And I believe that Article 12 has been instrumental in protecting who we are as a people, who we are as a culture. You know, it puzzles me that this is coming up now. But I'm here not only for myself, but for my kids. I thank my dad for handing over property to me, same with my mom, most likely. I thank them. But I also thank my great-grandparents for not selling out at a time when money was, you know, whether it's the Japanese era, the economic boom, Antisailan was just up here. I'm one of those family members that enjoys Antisailan's beach in Atugao, and my kids are able to enjoy that. Right next to Antisailan's beach, right next to her house, is Plumeria Resort that another family member sold. And all the future generations of the descendants of the Faustu and Palashus family from that lot lost out. You know, that was Carolinian land from our great-grandma. On the Costura side, we still have land. On the Tenorio side, there's still land. On the Atlick side, on the Mundo side, we still have land. And that, I thank, you know, our grandparents and great-grandparents. We had a choice. Our founding fathers and our people made a choice. They had a choice to be a territory, they had a choice to be independent, and we chose this Commonwealth status, which is very unique. Actually, a lot of people want what we have. My kids have, you know, are part Filipino. But the people in the Philippines had the same choice after World War II. And that's why there's so many Filipinos that you have to be Filipino to own land in the Philippines. And that's why, you know, they didn't get bought out. So having worked for Outer City Group, for example, and the real estate, if we didn't have Article 12 when Best Sunshine came in, when all these investors came in, we would've lost most of our land. We would've lost our identity. I've seen relatives who sold apartments worth millions for 200,000. You know, so not only did they lose out, it's a permanent remove. Like right now, locals may be getting scammed, right? But by removing Article 12, it's a permanent scam for future generations. So, you know, out of respect to all of you in here and the people of the CNMI and especially the NMDs, please do your fiduciary duty and keep Article 12 intact. But also as a respect to my bar, Honorable Senator Jude, let's not crucify him. Let's respect him because everyone has, you know, opinions. And, you know, it's pretty hard to take in all of those. So, you know, let's pray and support each other and remember that we are one family. Thank you.
Piro Melvong, Honorable Chairman and Honorable Members of this Senate Board. Kim Malimi, a fellow follower. I stand before you as a Carolinian. My name is Mark Overvalman. And I'm standing here to express my own personal confusion regarding the proposal. I believe in our land being a precious commodity, a part of our heritage, identity, and our values. I also believe in people having freedom of choice on their lands, life, and everything in between. But at what cost? I understand the economic aspects and a certain loss of our traditional values because we have sent off our kids to explore the world and not be limited to just the CNMI. The opportunities we have by exploring beyond our island shores have eroded the ties to the lands that our ancestors hold dear. However, we're missing the bigger picture by allowing the modern world to shape and mold our new generation's views. A melancholy blanket is cast over our ancestors' beliefs and values. Finding a needle ground between our ancestors and the new generations is a huge challenge. But to just eliminate the protection of our lands without putting in safeguards or even trying alternative options seems reckless. I don't see a reason not to slow it down and explore options before executing such a drastic measure. I appreciate the fact that with this proposed initiative, it has sparked a conversation about Article 12. But without sound data to provide an objective discussion leaves a bitter taste. Therefore, I am against the current proposal. I thank you for giving me the opportunity to share my thoughts as a citizen of the Marianas. Levo mamai, olamai.
Since Mr. Valdemar is the the last individual from the public to testify on the initiatives of today's agenda, the public testimonies on their agendas is hereby closed. And at this time, I would like to recognize Mrs. Segalova to acknowledge written testimonies submitted for or against the initiatives.
RODP Chairman, J. J. Lefort Chairman, Members of the Senate RODP and J. J. Lefort Committee, and Members of the General Public in addition to oral testimonies received today on the proposed Senate Legislative Initiatives, please be advised with following testimonies and comments officially received as follows. Senate RODP Committee, Written Testimonies in Favor of SLI Number 2201. Honorable FMM Atlick, Mayor of Municipality of Rota, Marie Nora Palashus Coleman, Personal Testimony, Tomasataman Palashus Coleman, Personal Testimony. Written Testimonies Not in Favor of SLI Number 2201. Chilet Mina Odon San Nicolas, Tinian Resident, Personal Testimony. Roman RB Komacho, Northern Marianist Descent, Personal Testimony. Colani Odon Rages, Personal Testimony. John I Agarwal, Executive Assistant, Carolinian Affairs Office. Alicia Santos Ijito, Personal Testimony. Michael Marie B King, Personal Testimony. Somiya T Kwan, Personal Testimony. Signed with the initial O, Personal Testimony. Vito K. Cabo Jr., Personal Testimony. Joni R Leon Burrow, Personal Testimony. Tisha Borja Kipitov Cabo, Personal Testimony. Maria Hernandez May, Personal Testimony. Vanessa Guena, Personal Testimony. Kumika Bernadi, Personal Testimony. Isa and Gagarin, Artist Lecturer of the University of Minnesota. Fresca Cabo, Personal Testimony. Clarissa and White, Personal Testimony. Ley Tenorio, Personal Testimony. Abid Salon, C UNES, Personal Testimony. G. High Minus, Personal Testimony. Professor Anthony F. Charles D. Darno, McDonald's. Personal Testimony. Christina P. Matzunaga, Personal Testimony. Lupo Berny de Valta and Children, Personal Testimony. Deborah Muers, Personal Testimony. Yara Keem, Personal Testimony. Tia P. Comacho, Personal Testimony. Jalen Casey Pera, Personal Testimony. Caitlin Minimo, Personal Testimony. Josie Cruz, Personal Testimony. Mark Overvalman, Personal Testimony. One anonymous testimony of a concerned citizen. There are two testimonies that are not fully opposed to the proposed initiative from Norman Chan Jr. and Zeno Komacho de Langaro Jr. For the Senate J. J. Lefort Committee, Written Comments Received for SLI Numbers 2202, 2203, and 2204 have been provided by the Honorable Edward May Busen, Assistant General, and the Honorable FMM Attlick, Mayor of Municipality of Rota. Thank you, Mr. J.
Thank you, Mrs. Segalova. On behalf of the members of the joint committee, I thank you for your presence this evening and especially your testimonies on the initiatives. Your cooperation before and during the public hearing is very much appreciated. Thank you to all the committee members.
Thank you to all the committee members, the acting LBI Director, and the LBI staff for your presence this evening, inclusive the media. I now recognize Senator King Neighbors for his close remarks.
Thank you, Chairman. On behalf of the Senate Judiciary Committee on Judiciary, Government Law, and Federal Relations, we send our appreciation to all those who were here to provide their oral testimonies and all those who submitted written testimonies. I understand that there's a lot of passionate individuals with regards to how these legislative initiatives are being played out. So, I appreciate everybody's participation, and I encourage everybody who hasn't attended or who hasn't submitted public comments to please participate, because your voices will shape the future of these legislative initiatives. Thank you to, again, Acting Director Tenorio, the LBI Support Staff, and all who participated tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman and King Neighbors. The time is getting too late. Let's move down to adjournment. May I hear a motion to adjourn this joint public hearing?
Motion to adjourn this joint public hearing.
In a second. The motion has been made and seconded. Those in favor of the motion say aye. Those not in favor say no. The motion carries. Our joint public hearing is hereby adjourned at 8:54 PM. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, guys.